Alrighty, good afternoon, folks. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and it will be led by Dr. Flores.
Please stand. Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. We're gonna move on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
Summer.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any items to pull or to discuss? Mr. So?
Dr. Wyatt, we are looking to pull item 11.19 from the consent agenda. We are no longer going to be requiring this service.
Righty, so 11.19 will be pulled. Thank you. Dr. Flores?
Is this the time to pull all items, or no?
No.
Wait till he gets consent, okay, thanks.
Alrighty. Any others by staff? Alrighty, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda. Per the amendment of 11.19 being removed by staff. Alrighty, motion carries. Thank you. 1.4, inspirational message. And it looks like this meeting, it is me. So when I was thinking about this, and I thought there are a lot of things to talk about that are inspirational, but really, right now, I'm kinda thinking about going into next year. And so I wanted my message to be about going into next year off based of one of our mantras. And I think most of you know, you know, one of our main mantras here is making hope happen for our students. We talked about all the time, the last two years, that we know have been extremely challenging, but even then, our staff, our community, our students have persevered to make sure through all that time that our students are achieving, achieving at the highest level. But going into next year, we know there's gonna be some uncertainty, more changes in leadership, and questions about where is this district going? Well, I'm confident that this district's on a trajectory to become a district of excellence, and a district of tremendous opportunity for our students and families and our community by transforming their lives through education. So going into next year, I want us to have a revitalized sense of hope and optimism that we're the change for our city, as we have been for many years. And we're gonna lead that change with new leadership as well, in many different aspects. So I look forward to our new school year, and I look forward to the many, and I do mean many accomplishments of our students and staff. So here are some words about hope as we prepare for our new school year by Ms. Nikki Bonas. Hope, if you only carry one thing throughout your entire life, let it be hope. Let it be hope that better things are always ahead. Let it be hope that you can get through even the toughest of times. Let it be hope that you are stronger than any challenge that comes your way. Let it be hope that you're exactly where you are meant to be right now, and that you're on the path to where you're meant to be. Because during these times, hope will be the very thing that carries you through. I truly believe we are right where we're supposed to be right now, and more importantly, we are on the path to becoming a district of excellence. That is my expectation for us for the next school year. I look forward to working with all of you to make sure that hope happens at San Bernardino High School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Welcome, Dr. Flores. We'll move on to 2.0, public comments. 2.1, receive public comments.
President what?
Yes, sir.
I did get a parent, a call from a parent tonight who said that they were gonna come down tonight, and actually, the grandparent, wanted to do public comment. I told him, was that normally around 6 o'clock? So they come in late, would they be able to?
Yeah, we're actually moving pretty quickly, and that's not a bad thing. Yeah, we may be in closed session at that time. I would ask for consent from the board on that.
You told the parent to be here at 6?
Around 6 o'clock.
Now, start with Dr. Daddy Rogers. Dr. Daddy Rogers, is that it?
To be honest with you, I couldn't even hear what was said.
I talked to a parent tonight who said they wanted to come down and make public comments, and they asked me what the process was and what time. I told them normally around 6 o'clock. And so I know we're way earlier than 6 o'clock right now. So my ask is, after we come out of closed session, if they're here, can we go ahead and allow them to do public comment?
If we're, yeah, if we're out of closed session, I guess at 6 o'clock is the time. Yeah.
Ms. Rosales Medina? Dr. Flores?
Yeah.
Alright, Ms. Tillman, obviously you're a yes. Ms. Sabios?
I'm okay with that as well, just making sure that we open that and extend that to any parent in the future as well. Just keep that in mind.
I would agree. Alright, thank you, board. So 2.1, this is only time to public, we have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within our subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And we will start with our first public comment, Ms. Linda Hart. Welcome, Ms. Hart.
Good evening. And I had it set for Superintendent, but I see he's not here. And Chairman of the Board and members of the Board. I wanted to share with you the picture here. We had over 200 or more parents and students that showed up for the Sparks Wellness and Basketball Camp. And so I want to thank you, the board, for allowing us to have the participation and your support, and your support in making that happen. I am in negotiations with them on bringing other activities to our city. So this was a good showing, and they were very well pleased. So there's three reasons why I'm here today. My second request, and this is to Dr. Scott, Chairman of the Board. I listened to your inspiration that you spoke of so elegantly today. My request is, I know going into before COVID, the African-American students' benchmarks were low. So with that being shared, can you, in the future, in the near future, have some data supporting where they are, where their status are, and those benchmarks? Because when you talk about the future, this is gonna be very critical on where they are today. You are missing today. So I just kinda would take some of the bullet points that you mentioned. In order for our students to be successful, we need to know where they are today. Do you know?
No, Ms. Hart, right off the top of my head, I do not know, but I would defer to my staff. I imagine some of them may know. We are missing quite a few people over there, but it looks like Ms. Applegate is shaking her head, yes.
Okay, great, because we need to know. We need to know where they are. If we don't know where they are, then we don't know where they're going. And if we don't know where they're going, we're in bad shape, as I shared before. I was on several committees, and we looked at hard data that showed that they wasn't quite where they needed to be. So I am very interested, and I'm sure other parents are as well, as to where our students are. And the third request, I know there was a report on contract providers, I believe, that was being generated. At what point can we expect that to come to the public, is my third request? And that's about what I have to share today. Thank you.
Alrighty, and Ms. Hart, just so you know, to look at that data, I'm actually pretty good at that. It wouldn't take me long. So if I wasn't leading the meeting, I probably could sneak around and take a look at my phone real quick and figure that out for you. But you know, there's a lot of data sets that we wanna look at, right? Student achievement, absenteeism, suspensions, expulsions.
Right, graduation rate. What's the graduation rate for African-American students? I wanna know. If no one else wanted to come to the dais and ask those questions, I will. I will be more engaged, because these are the kind of questions we need to know to stay on top, to ensure that our students become successful. And I know you all, at some point, understand where I'm coming from. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, our next public comments speaker is Ms. Negretti. Welcome, Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, board members. I know that I have asked before, who evaluates our superintendents? Not the superintendent, the assistant superintendents? And just because there's a question of competency? And so I'm looking at one of the agenda items, and I see that there are 11 employees who are going to Rangelis Palmas. Several years ago, when, under Del Marston, they bought the PDC building, which used to be the Old Sun Building, the whole pretense for the public was that it was gonna save hundreds of thousands of dollars in training, because they were no longer gonna need to send the staff to, you know, out of state, or maybe up in Big Bear. I saw that during Del Marston, you know, people were going to Big Bear. So why is there a need to send 11 employees? No names mentioned, because you know, when you send parents somewhere, you name the parent. And what is the purpose of it? So when you're sending 11 employees, which are classified and certificated, what is the purpose? Who are they, and why is there a need when hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent on the PDC building? So again, we go back to, who is evaluating? The assistant superintendents, because is there actually someone who is competent enough in those positions? Or are decisions just being made to be wasteful of public funds? Because when it comes to our students, it's always nickel and diming. I know that ASB at my daughter's school is short, $6,000, and they're saying, you know what, Mom? We're gonna have to cut back, or we're gonna have to fundraise more, or we're gonna have to do something to come up with that shortness of $6,000. So why then go ahead and waste over $15,000 when there's a PDC building? Are we just sending somebody on a summer vacation, or what's going on? So can we have some accountability of, you know, where the public funds are being spent? Are they truly being spent for the best interest of students? I've asked you before, please look at that assistant superintendent. I mean, you're the ones that are up here who evaluates them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Alright, our next public comments, and I believe everybody's together on this one. So we have Elijah Valdez, Emmett Giliard, and it looks like Renee, and I apologize, I can't read the last name. No. Alidres, maybe? Alidres? Please come on up. And I'm sorry if I botched that, I just can't read the letters. It looks like Alcaraz.
Alcaraz.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like Alcatraz without the T. So first and foremost, I would like to say thank you for allowing the public speaking for anyone that has a concern. So I'm coming to you guys today because I'm humbly, and I have a grave concern about a situation that happened at North Park Elementary. Okay? The same school where there was a shooting at a few years back. My grandson was there. Elijah Valdez, he'll speak in a minute. We got through that alright, without counseling. And he's been at North Park since kindergarten. He has a specific child custody case where his mom kidnapped him, and we had to get an attorney to bring him back. So we had a specific communication with the school to make sure that anything happening with the school, that we were always kept in knowledge of any problems, any bruises, any bullying, anything. With that being said, for the last four months, I've been fighting a situation at the school, at the North Park Elementary, because my grandson came to me one day telling me that he was bullied by a student intern. I tried to investigate, I tried to report it. One thing went to the next thing, that was unprofessionally handled every single time. Okay? And going from long to short, we just recently got this report from the independent investigator, because there was so much, there were so many inconsistencies with what was going on at the school, with Mrs. Yareda Downing. And when I came to her, and I told her this happened, the first thing that she said to me, oh, Mr. who? Mr. Wes Waggard? Oh, he's a very good person. We've never heard anything bad about him. I said, excuse me, just because you haven't heard anything about this person doesn't mean that something didn't transpire. And also about, no, I'm sorry, the Wes Waggard was a different situation. The first, the others, that was the first incident. Another incident was with Mr. Robert Sisnells, which scared the crap out of my grandson, to the point where he was throwing up physically. We had to get him counseling. And every single time we have gone to the, to the school district, no, I didn't wanna come to the school district without following protocol. We always follow protocol. Okay? We are community activists, but whether I'm a community activist or not, here or anywhere else, has no bearing on it. What I'm coming to you today is about child safety. I'm worried about my own grandchild and other children in the school district. And I have already been in communication with Mr. Funchess. So this has been an ongoing investigation. And obviously, we're here because I don't like the outcome. Because basically, what this has come down to is preponderance of evidence. Now, in the court system, verbiage is a really big issue. Because depending on how you describe something, or how you write it in the law, or for instance, your anti-bullying policy, BP 5131.2 about school environment, it talks about protecting the student from physical and emotional harm. A, high priority. B, will not be tolerated. It also is there to promote effective communication and conflict resolution skills, social skills, character values, education, respect for cultural and individual differences, self-esteem development, and assertiveness skills. He should be able to assert himself and tell those people he needs to come to the office and call his grandmother for help. He was refused access, stopped in his tracks to get to the office. And because there was no video or audio to substantiate that, then it's not necessarily true or false. Now, I understand the district's policy and the human resources side, Mr. Funchess. Okay? But understand that the safety is way more important than anybody else's job. And I will take it to whoever I have to take it, and this is why we're here. Again, I'm coming to you humbly because I have been waiting since February. And different bullying things have not even been, low-level referrals. I don't know what a low-level referral is. But low-level referrals are not reported to the office. They're handled by the teacher. And so there's bullying in the office, in the, on the playground, in the classroom. It's not reported. So therefore, the investigation came back that there's not substantial evidence to prove that my grandson was being bullied by this other child, because they never sent it to the office. I have pictures of a bruise that he got from this kid pushed him down. But again, the investigation says there's a need for further evidence. I provided the name of another person that the child was worried, because after the student interned, Mr. Robert Sisnells scared my grandson. He supposedly quit and got another job. But then a parent told me that he was allowed to come back to campus as a testing proctor. Okay? And he was back on campus. So the other student was scared, and he was worried, and his mom called me, because it's a poor parent. Excuse me, I'll let my grandson talk now, okay?
Thank you. Welcome, Elijah.
Alright, I'm Elijah Valdez.
Hi, Elijah. Good to see you.
Go ahead, sweetheart. Baby, it's okay. It's, everything's fine. Don't worry, I'm right here with you, okay?
I'm here to tell you. About it, incident.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna step in, okay? This has already been reported, so I'm gonna say what he told me. Okay? He was accused of throwing something off of a table. He didn't do it. If the principal would have done the investigation, she would have found that he wasn't involved to begin with. He was being reprimanded. While he was being reprimanded, the student intern told him, Elijah, get the room and sweep the floor. He says, what did I do? He says, you know what you did. He says, and he says, what did I do? He says, you know what you did. So Elijah says, I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm gonna go to the office and call my grandma. Again, we already have this relationship with the office. So he leaves to go talk to the, to the office. As he's going down there, when they're dismissed, he walks, Mr. Robert walks behind him, and then tells Elijah, oh, so you're gonna go snitch on me to Mrs. Downing? And he says, no, I didn't say that. He said, I said I was gonna go to the office and call my grandmother. He said, all you have to do was talk to me, Elijah. And he said, I did try to talk to you, but you wouldn't listen. So then he says, so, what else does he say? You wouldn't listen? And then he says, well, you're not gonna win this battle and go to class. So my grandson never got a chance to go to the office at all. And he went to class. When we picked him up from school, I have a picture that I sent to Mr. Funchess and a few other people, okay? Of how he was crying, he was physically ill. We got a phone call from Mr. Funchess in the car. He threw up in the car on our way to basketball practice. My grandson is 11 years old. He practices on a travel ball team with 13 and 14-year-olds. We just came from a travel ball tournament. So for him to be in this state is ridiculous. He is well-versed, he's known in the community, he's an activist himself. We do community service. I'm here because something's gotta change. Now, I understand that maybe in the verbiage, maybe you can't find it in the verbiage, but something's gotta happen. And this district has been sued before for customer service. You guys had to specifically make something up to put a pamphlet out. So info is out there. And Mr. Wes Waggard at North Park also was very rude to us and our concerns about different situations, which it was Mr. Wes Waggard, some little things about sports, about child safety. He was very rude to myself, to my husband, to the point where the school staff turned it around. Mrs. Downing said that the school staff was apprehensive in speaking to me. When I got there that day, I had several hugs from different people that saw me there from the staff. I get along very well. I have a lot of people in the community that know me well, because we serve the community. Okay? Mr. Wes Waggard said that my husband was intimidating, right after saying that everything was fine. Although saying that everything was good, we were working, and there was issues, Mr. Waggard apologized for his behavior, for being dismissive to different things that were going on in the sports program. We spoke with the sports supervisor, Amy something, I'm sorry, baby, I don't remember what her name is. But we spoke to her, we had a meeting with her. So we, and we also had a meeting at North Park with Mr. Funchess, Mrs. Downing, Mr. Waggard, Mr. Robert. And they all, and they said that they didn't do this, and they didn't do that, when they did. So we asked for independent investigation. We asked for, was the videos at that school, especially since there was a shooting? We got this kid through the shooting. And now he's feeling the same effects that he had at that time? That's ridiculous. That should not happen to him or anybody. You know, why wasn't it important for Mrs. Downing, or the other staff, or anybody to believe him? Does it really have to be video for a child to be believed? Because the other thing that I told Mrs. Downing was, okay, so what? Don't believe the child that the priests molested him? Don't believe the child that they were raped until they're pregnant? What are we doing here? I have been in this school district for a long time. I love this school district. I love San Bernardino. I'm not giving up. We have a lot, we have a lot built into this community. And I have a lot more lives to save. Where this is not about looking good and this and that, makeup, no makeup, high heels, no high heels. That is all irrelevant to me. I'm out here trying to save lives. We put on a free clinic, basketball clinic, several years, for four, six hours, just to save the community. We wanna save one, one child. And this is part of that. And I'm asking for you guys to please do something. Put that in your, in your mind. I pray to God and our Creator, everything. I have a lot of people watching this. And if something does not happen, or if something happens with those other people, I will put everyone's feet to the fire, and they will come up. Now, I'm very thankful for everything that the board has done for me. I have another son here that just graduated with a 4.3 at Cajon High School. Honors, I don't, I don't know how many things he got. Okay? And thank you, Mr. Danny Tillman, for all these years, helping with all the youth programs that you put out, and all the different things. Because directly with Mr. Danny Tillman, I have been able to help so much other youth, and spread him this way, and spread him that way, because of the programs that Danny Tillman has put out there. So thank you so much. I needed to acknowledge you. Let my husband speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Giliard.
Peace and blessings to the board. My name is Emmett Giliard.
You're a little taller, so if we can move the, there we go.
Peace and blessings to the board. My name is Emmett Giliard. I actually wanted to speak directly to Doc Irving, I mean, he's not here. The purpose of my conversation was to ask him directly, if you have an open-door policy, and someone asks you to meet with them, why would that be rejected? Obviously, I can't get that answer, because he's not here. I also wanted to ask him, if you had just previously met my entire family three, four weeks prior, and explained that you have an open-door policy to my wife, my grandson, my son who's at the back of the classroom, who we just got to discussing, graduated from Cajon, why that right? It's not a privilege when somebody opens the door for you to walk in. It's a right now. Why that right was rejected? Then I had another question for him. I see the monies being spent in this district. Last meeting that we were in, we had a student's mother who was here complaining about the activities going on at San Bernardino High School. My heart was broken in that conversation, not just because of what the mother was saying, because San Bernardino High School is the moniker of this district. Why is that not the flagship for the high schools in this district? What are we doing? What are we saying? How much misrepresentation has to be brought to the light before we recognize and we understand what we're not doing? This is not a game. What we do, what we're supposed to be doing, is providing essentials to these youth. The reason why my family does what we do, the reason why we act, we're activists, the reason why we do things for free, the reason why we spend the monies that we have on any youth, is because if we save one, we save one. If we save one, we can save two. If we save two, we can save three. Our goal is to save all of them. We all need help, but they need it more than we do. And as the adults, I tell them this every day. I just left a two-hour practice. You will be holding the keys to this planet for all of us when we have no strength to do it. You will be moving this planet when we have no strength to do it. If we do not empower them, and we don't teach them, and we don't give them the necessary tools, we all lose. It's not their loss, it's our loss as well. We need to start empowering the youth, making sure that they have the necessary essential tools to just do the work. These programs have to be set up correctly. We have to have a true leader. I'm sorry, I'm gonna say it, he's not here. If he was a true leader, he would not have pulled out, because he couldn't have his way. This is not a dictatorship. That's why we have a board. That's why everybody on this board's input is important. So we don't have somebody just run rogue across the board and do whatever they wanna do. That's what democracy is about. And we need to start remembering things. And we need to start remembering things. We need to start reevaluating things and start putting the value back where the value's supposed to be. This is our future. And if we're not supporting this as a future, then everybody who's back there needs to step down and let somebody else who will do the job and do the work, do the work. But we have to have a true leader, that was not a leader. A leader doesn't quit. I was always taught and I was always told, when the tough gets, when the tough gets, when the work gets harder, when the work, I'm, I'm all off folks. Please help me, please, please help me. Thank you, sister, say it again so we all can hear. When the, when the going gets tough, the tough good going. And it looked like I got some tough people in front of me, let's get going. Let's make everything right. This is not about my grandson on the Creator, I promise you this is not. This little man right here went to school with another student who was being bullied by his stepfather. None of the teachers noticed it, he noticed it. He brought it to the attention to the office. Why is he being penalized? Why is that not something he was recognized for because of the leadership or their lack of? Did the lack, the leadership at that school should have recognized that and made sure he was recognized for that? So as I've said to you several times, there is an atmosphere that has been going on there that has to come to an end. It must be stopped. Business as usual, if you know, is illegal in California. We must end business as usual and get to the real business and the business of developing the future for these young individuals so we can have a future. I'm 56 years old, my life is not over. To my dying breath, I will give. And if only thing I receive back like I tell these kids is your success, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Gilliard and family.
Thank you very much for coming. And Dr. Wyatt, we will follow up, right?
Yes ma'am, absolutely. And tonight it's Mr. Saun, so Mr. Saun will ask you to follow up at the appropriate department. Thank you. All right, our next public speaker is Mr. Deion Taylor. Where are you at, Mr. Taylor? Come on up. Been a while. He's still looking good up there and smiling all the time, always smiling. Amen.
How are we doing today? Just wanted to come and address the board personally, myself. I, first of all, I wanna say hello to everyone. Some of you know I know and I work with very well within the community and some I would look forward to getting to know and work with a lot closer. Sorry for the problems we have in the day, but first of all, if y'all don't mind, can I pray? Are we allowed to pray at the board? To say a prayer for the board? Father God, we just thank you for the day and we just ask that you address the young lady that just had this situation and her family and also the board members here, Father God. We ask that you would just encourage them and empower them, Lord, that even though things get a little hard, Father, that they there and had a right mind to do the right thing, Lord. We just thank you, Father, for looking on this wonderful city and all that you bestowed upon us, Lord Jesus, all these wonderful leaders that you have here, Lord Jesus. We ask that we come together on one accord to do your will, Father, and that's to create a better quality of life for our youth, for our students, for their parents as well, Lord, and for this city. So we give you honor and glory and praise in Jesus' name, amen? I just wanted to address that I did turn in a petition today for a charter. Here it's called the Academy of Hope, for a charter school here that will be located at Ecclesia Christian Fellowship School. So I just wanted to address the board myself, I look forward to partnering with you and coming closer together and bonding and building and helping our community. So thank you so much again and thank you for all you do. I know this is somewhat hard and a little distressing, but we will get through this together. So thank you so much and it's good seeing everyone again. And I just say, God bless you all, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, thank you for the prayer.
Thank you.
And just, you know, we didn't get along on the hope thing, so. That did sound good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Ms. Cunningham, is that it for in-person public comments, or we have one coming up? And folks, we do have one that's virtual as well. Okay, the virtual one is not here. Mr. Saun, for clarification on other agenda items such as consent items, does the public have the right to speak at that time?
Correct, if there is a agenda item, they can speak to the agenda item.
Is it at that time or right now?
At that time.
At that time, okay. All right. So then, Mr. Gray, you're, I'm sorry. We're moving pretty quickly tonight, though, so let's be optimistic and say we'll get there pretty quickly, so. I'd like to believe that. All right, but thank you for waiting and being here. And Ms. Cunningham, you said our virtual, Mr. is not here?
He's not here.
And I know we talked about a person coming at six, is that? Oh, is that, alright, well, good, made it on time, fantastic. So we won't have to come back out for that one. All right, if there are no other public comments at this time, we will go into closed session 3.0 and then 3.1. Oh, closed session, public comment. It looks like we have one by Ms. Latoya Smith, come on up. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Board President, Board members. My name's Latoya Smith, Chief Steward for CSCA Chapter 183. The first thing I would like to do is first recognize our classified employees who, instead of taking an early summer vacation, decided to volunteer and work at our school sites for the summer programs to assist with the programs themselves and our students. And then I would like you to also know that we are currently in negotiations. We do have some day schedules and we're hoping that we can get the Juneteenth sunshine so that we can also start negotiating that again with our negotiations period. And we're looking forward to the collaboration that we're gonna have together. Now, next is regarding the safety of our students and our staff during the summer, summertime right now. There are guidelines and protocols in place for our summer heat. And so the next two weeks alone, we know that the temperatures are averaging between 98 to up to over 100 degrees. And for elementary and middle schools, we have certain protocols and guidelines. For instance, when it comes to it being 95 to 99 degrees outside, for PE or for recess, the sites are supposed to supply ample amounts of water and reduce the time of all outside activities. PE classes should actually be held inside, in air-conditioned environments if possible, and then at a minimum, if they're gonna be outside, needs to be a shaded area. Now, if it gets to 100 degrees, the sites are supposed to stop all activities outside and any kind of play. And then they're supposed to continue to continue to give the ample amount of water for our students. Now, for our high school students, according to the CDC, heat illness during practice or competition is the leading cause of death among our U.S. students and districts. So, right now, our district goes by the National Athletic Trainers Association Exertional Heat Illness Protocol, which basically means that when the temperatures are between 82 and 86.9 degrees, the sites will make sure that the students have three breaks of four minutes each within an hour. When it is, the temperatures are 87 to 89.9 degrees, they will have four rest breaks of four minutes of every hour. And if the temperatures get between 90 to 92 degrees, the students will have five rest breaks of four minutes each every hour, meaning that within one hour, 33% of that time should be the students resting. And then if it goes over 92.1 degrees, all outdoor activities are supposed to be canceled. So we know the guidelines for so far, right? So now our members of the receiving department, let's talk about that for the district warehouse. The safety protocol for them for the summer is for them to not stop working, basically. That no matter the temperature, they're supposed to work. No increased breaks, just work. No air conditioning, just work. With one cooler, water cooler dispenser, just work. No vacation approvals for the whole month of June, just work. And then on top of that, the district is mandating, not volunteering, but mandating all the employees to work 56 hours this week, including this Saturday. And then next week, they're supposed to work 50 hours that week. So we're talking about 16 hours of overtime this week forced, 10 hours of overtime next week. Now, this does not show that the district is concerned with our members' health, this does not boost morale, this does not build good working relationships with employees, and this certainly does not show that the district values these members. We understand there's an issue, we're well aware of that. However, this issue did not happen this week, it did not happen last month, it's been over a year. And admin did not implement or adjust properly to the situation that was developing. And now, instead, are putting that pressure on the members with unreasonable expectations. So, we have made several suggestions to Noah Bell, and that's why I'm here tonight, to ask the board to take this pressure off our members. For they are valuable and their health is important, not just to the district, but to their families. So I wanna thank you all for the time and I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Looks like we have a couple questions for you by Vice President Tillman and then Dr. Flores.
It's not so much a question, I just wanna make sure that maybe we agenda this item later in terms of overtime. I never knew we had a mandatory overtime, but it's definitely something that the board should consider, because I wouldn't be in support of mandating someone having to work overtime across the board, so. President Dr. Wyatt, maybe we can agenda it?
I would say we'd have to have consent to do so and then also maybe defer to Dr. Funches as well, I mean.
It's a negotiable item, so those items have to be taken care of at the negotiations table.
Well, maybe even if we have to do it in closed session, just sort of the board to understand where we're at, I think it'd be important. So I'm looking for consensus to agenda it at the next meeting. Dr. Flores?
Yeah, but I wanted to ask her a question.
Can I clarify about the, about the contract part when it comes to the overtime?
I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask.
That grabbed our attention, so.
I was gonna look up the contract and I have it right here. But go ahead and clarify the contract.
So regarding the mandatory overtime, it is negotiable as Dr. Funch has stated. However, there's two components to overtime.
Just point of clarification, Dr. Flores, just, just to be cautious, the reason why I ask for it to be agenda is because it's not agenda.
Clarify.
And we can't have back and forth conversations because it's not agenda.
Well, I have the contract right here. And it, and it does say, can I say something or no?
I would, I would say that should be in closed session. Only questions of clarification, please.
Only questions of clarification. So I'll ask you a yes or no. The contract clearly says that you cannot mandate overtime, is that correct?
No.
Yes or no?
No, the, the contract does mandate, it's that you can mandate overtime. There's voluntary overtime and, or mandated.
But it's voluntary?
No, there's two different overtimes. There's a voluntary overtime and there can be a required overtime, which basically is mandated overtime.
If they're just point of order, if there are questions, even if they're for open session, then they should be, it should be agenda.
Yes. Okay, we need to agenda.
I'll start with Dr. Dottie Rogers for consent.
I, I heard to, to agenda it to have the discussion.
In, in closed session. Mr. Rosales Medina? All right, Dr. Flores, obviously yes. Yes for me, Mr. Tillman, Ms. Abios.
I guess I just have some questions about it. In terms of agendizing items, there's other items that have come up before that we haven't necessarily agendized, so I just wanna make sure that we're kind of, you know, and, and also, not that I don't support, please.
Oh yeah, no problem, no problem.
I absolutely support that. I just wanna make sure that we're kind of, you know, not ignoring other things that have come up before and, you know, kinda jumping and agendizing other things. So I, I guess my point of clarification for you, Dr. Funches, is can you, and it sounds like the answer is yes, but I'm gonna ask anyway.
Right now, this is not.
Address whatever concerns are happening at the negotiation table without us having to necessarily agenda item?
There are two things that we could do. Wait for negotiations to address that piece of the contract or work with CSCA and the building administrators on this problem at hand right now. Does that make sense?
So you can work with them to address whatever concerns outside of it having to be agenda?
Oh, that's always possible, yes.
Okay, I think I would say no then to the, to the request, so no to the consensus.
Okay, so we had five board members that approved consent and one that did not.
And I just wanna make sure this is coming when it should come, I mean, because he, he's negotiating it or going to know, so we just need clarification that this is not jumping over something, we, we gotta, we will, we will receive it when you bring, like you do the rest of the negotiations and then he can update that piece that she's discussing with us to make sure that we.
Agenda it for closed session.
Correct.
That's why I defer to Dr. Funches, I was quite sure that this is being negotiated.
He will bring it when.
And the reason why I'm asking to have it agenda immediately is because this is the summertime and there are issues of concern about the temperature, so if we, the sooner we address it, the better. The normal timeline for negotiations in terms of with our different associations is not dictated by the actual temperatures and climate and environment. That's what I want the board to make sure we have an understanding of and give direction.
Well, I guess the question is clarifying, is it, I mean, is it right now, is it happening or no, you're just gonna start? I thought it was already in process.
Negotiations?
Yes, for this.
Yes, we, we are negotiating right now at the table with CSCA. Correct.
So we should see it soon, right, okay.
And thank you for that clarification, because there is a, you know, important issue at hand and that is current working conditions as we speak. And we know this week is gonna be extremely hot, should be 100 plus temperatures this week as well. Ms. Rosales Medina, is this, this shouldn't be a discussion on this particular day.
No, it's not a discussion, I was just gonna clarify, just for a point of information that we typically do have this in closed session, but I understand, so I just, yeah.
Dr. Flores and then Ms. Abios.
I just wanted to clarify and see if I understood, this is happening now?
Yes, it's happening right now.
Right now, and that's the urgency.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Abios.
Again, just to clarify and thank you for the additional clarification. I'm learning how things get agenda on the agenda, right? And so there's other things that, like I said, have come up and, and we haven't necessarily agenda them, and so that's why the question's about, you know, making sure that you all have the opportunity to talk about and, you know, enter into those conversations. And if it's not possible and, and it's recommended that we bring it forward, then, then so be it, but.
The reason that I'm here today, the negotiations that we're having right now is for 22, 23 school year. It's not for what we already have in place, which is why I'm just, that's why I brought it up today. It's not anything to do with 22, 23, it actually has to do with what's taking place now in our current contract that's already been done.
So that, so that even adds more to, I guess, my questions. If it's something that's occurring now, when would our next board meeting be, you know, and, and whether it'd make a difference or not, right?
Ms. Abios, our next board meeting is July 19th, we would have to have a special board meeting.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Dr. Funches.
I can just make a clarifying question. I do know of some of the things that Mrs. Smith and Mr. Luis Chavez has been, have been speaking of in terms of the warehouse, and I do know that some mitigation measures were put in place, like the heat illness prevention plan and trying to add more water and things like that. I don't have any issue with reaching out to CSCA tomorrow to sit down with their team and, and my team and take a look at what we might be able to do to support our employees. That's what we should do.
Thank you. Dr. Flores, a point of order? Okay, thank you. Well, Ms. Smith, thank you for your public comment and as you could see, the board and I believe the district is very concerned about the working conditions of our staff. And as you could see, the board and I believe the district is very concerned about the working conditions of our staff and.
Thank you.
Sounds like they'll be going to the table very soon. Thank you. All right, just double check before we move. Oh, actually, this is closed session agenda, so we will continue. Any other closed session public comments? There are not. All righty, folks, well, thank you again for being here. We will go into closed session at this time. Thank you. All righty, all righty, we'll go ahead and call this meeting back in order. 4.0, action reporter from closed session. 4.1, approval of coordinator, special education, academic instruction. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approved the appointment of the following employee. Jacqueline Willis, coordinator, special education, academic instruction. Effective date, work year and sire to be determined.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All righty, motion carries and congratulations to Ms. Willis. Does she happen to be here? I said, I was told she was not, but let's just double check. All right, well, if she's watching out there in the virtual world, congratulations to you and outstanding appointment. Okay, 4.2. Expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's finding of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.3. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion, excluding mandatory offenses but remanded to youth court for other means of corrections. And let's go. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation findings of facts of positive development and orders suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. 4.4, students recommended for suspension but deleted from student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court or due process errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for suspension, but the suspension was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or availability of other means of correction in compliance with Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for suspension, the suspension was reversed or modified.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.5. Excuse me. Students recommended for expulsion but terminated in student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court, availability of other means of corrections and/or due process errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for expulsion. The expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence and/or the availability of other means of correction in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. I believe that was Dr. Daddy Rogers on the second. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. 4.6, lift of expulsion of student. The Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following student with identification number as indicated below to schools of the Samuel City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Mine might be off and I had to click it back. Do you see it? Yeah, that's not correct. Yay.
And let the record reflect that Dr. Daddy Rogers voted yay. All right, motion carries. We will move on to lifting of expulsion of student. The Board of Education authorizes expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement or rescinding of the following student with identification number as indicated below to schools of the Samuel City Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 4.8. Other closed session action. There was no other board, other closed session action at this time. We will move on to 5.0, public hearings. And we'll move on to 5.1. I will now open 5.1, adoption of SELPA annual budget plan and annual service plan 2022 through 2023, special education. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
All right, I will now close this public hearing. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the Samuel City Unified School District's 2022 through 2023 special education, annual service plan and budget. Be it further resolved, Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, Assistant Superintendent, Student Services, be authorized to sign all required documents relating to this plan. Okay, there is no further discussion. Let's vote.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We'll vote. All right, motion carries. We'll close that, move on to 5.2. I will now open 5.2, acceptance and adoption of the memorandum of understanding between Samuel City Unified School District and CSEA, Chapter 183 for the 2022 through 2023 classified work year calendars. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
All right.
And then we'll second, then you can talk, then discussion. So moved?
Oh, wait, actually, public comments was supposed to be in between. Yeah, there are no public comments, correct? Okay.
What about board comment?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Until the vote and then the same.
No, after I close. So I now close this public hearing. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts memorandum of understanding 2022 through 2023 classified work year calendars between the Samuel City Unified School District and California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 183.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Now we have discussion. Dr. Flores?
Yes, I would like to recommend that we consider adding Juneteenth as a holiday.
Have that in my notes.
And I don't know how we do that. I don't know if Dr. Funches, you know, takes it to them.
Dr. Flores, that is a negotiable item and we are.
Did you say? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That is a negotiable item. We are at the table with CSEA and that is a topic of discussion. Eventually, we'll get, it'll get to SBTA as well. So under board's direction, I can definitely work with the union groups on that. So I'll bring it back to you.
They'll come back to us in closed session, negotiations.
Correct.
So do we need to give you direction now?
No, not right now.
No, not yet. But you'll go, okay?
Thank you.
Is that right? Thank you.
All right. All righty, good discussion. Let's vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.3. Adoption of the 2022, 2023 inland career education center school calendar.
A moved.
Second.
All righty, I will now open the 5.3 adoption of the 2022, 2023 inland career education center school calendar. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
All right, I will now close this public hearing. Be it resolved, the Board of Education receives and adopts the 2022 through 2023 inland career education center school calendar.
A moved.
All right.
Second.
All righty, I don't believe there's any further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.4, adoption of 2023, 2024 and 2024 and 2025 traditional school calendars. I'll go ahead and open. Are there any public comments?
There are none.
All right, I'll go ahead and close. Be it resolved, the Board of Education receives and adopts the 2023, 20 through 2024 and 2024 through 2025 traditional school calendars as presented and amended.
A moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We have a discussion I invite Dr. Daddy Rogers.
This was where I was going to ask the question, looking at this, how it aligns with what you all were going to do with negotiations regarding Juneteenth. And so I think you kind of answered.
Did, and I'd bring it back to you in closed session and we'd be able to amend the calendar once we get board approval on the negotiations. Thank you.
Very good. Dr. Flores?
That was my question. And if we had to ask it again for this, for this one, or was it for everybody? It was for everybody? Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
All righty.
For all calendars? Okay.
Thank you on both. I'll go in closed session. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Moving right along to 7.0, reports and presentations. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. 6.0, reports by union organizations. 6.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
There is no report.
All right, no report. 6.2, California School Employees Association.
There is no report.
All right, no report. 6.3, Communication Workers of America.
There is no report.
All right, thank you very much. 6.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association.
Ditto.
Moving right along. Now we're at 7.0. See, I was there already. Reports and presentation, 7.1, Citizen Oversight Committee, 2021 through 2022, school year annual written report. All right, welcome. Now I'll read this for the Citizen Oversight Committee COC bylaws. The committee shall present to the Board of Education the 2021, 2022 annual written report. Jane, boy, I better get this one right. Zal, Zal, Zalman, Zalman? Boy, all right, that one. Vice Chair will give a brief report. But you don't look like Jane. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Gilbreth and I appreciate all of your time. And want to thank you for taking a few minutes as we present this Citizens Oversight Committee board presentation. My name is Kevin Gilbreth. I am the current president of the Measure T and Measure N Bonds Citizens Oversight Committee. It is my pleasure to present the committee with its annual report. I have been on the committee since November 20 of 2021 and continue to see and enjoy what the district and the bond funds have been doing to help improve our schools. As an alumni of San Gregorio High School, my wife an alumni of Cajon. Both of our children have attended San Bernardino schools. I am an employee of the county as a teacher. So this was a very fitting opportunity to apply and be selected for this position. The committee is legally charged under the educational code and California constitution with direct taxpayer review of the bond measure and with informing the public about expenditures of the bond proceeds to ensure that spending conforms to the bond language approved by the voters. I am here this evening to inform the board and the public regarding the committee's findings from the 17th year of the bond program from July 2020 through June 2021. The committee has prepared an annual report to highlight our district's activities for the time period and to clarify that the district is in compliance with the requirements of the California constitution. Specifically, we are here to certify that the following three requirements have been fulfilled. Proceeds from the bond sales are used only for the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation or replacement of school facilities, including the furnishing and equipment, equipping of school facilities or the acquisition or lease of real estate property for facilities. Number two, a list of specific school facilities to be funded by the bond has been prepared. Number three, an annual independent performance audit has been prepared to ensure that the funds were expended appropriately for the projects listed. This information was validated by an independent auditing firm of, excuse if I say this incorrectly, Iben Bailey, in their reports submitted for the period ending June 30th, 2021. The committee members continue to be pleased with the progress that the district has made in the new buildings of schools and improving learning spaces for the communities they serve. That is evident in the reimagination of Pacific High School, which I hope you have all seen. It is magnificent. With the CTE transportation building, a new administration building and the ongoing modernization of many schools throughout the district. The Citizens Oversight Committee members and officers wish to thank the board, the superintendent and staff for their support and appreciation of this opportunity to serve the taxpayers of the district and to inform the public regarding the Measure T and Measure N bonds. It is my pleasure to serve the district in this capacity of a member of the committee and my vice chair, and I encourage everyone and anyone who is interested to apply for a membership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Oh, wait.
I just wanted to thank you.
We do have a couple.
I just wanted to thank the Oversight Committee. I read the whole report. It's beautiful and it's very thorough. And we just appreciate all your effort and oversight. And thank you very much.
Just a small part, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosales Medina?
I also want to say thank you to you as well as everyone that's on the board, the members. I did notice that in one of the sheets, there's four vacancies. Is there a need for us to fill those vacancies? Would that come through the school district so we can make sure that you have additional support within the board?
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
I'm the only current working person on there. There's some other people that are retired but have affiliation with the district. So there would be, any support would be wonderful.
And then just to put it out there, we would need one senior citizen, one business community, two business community and then a parent, active parent. So if you can reach out to the school district, that way they can apply. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Gilbreth?
Yes?
Yeah, I too want to thank you. I know the volunteers in our district don't get enough credit. And so you guys are almost invisible, going to meetings, doing it for. the volunteers in our district don't get enough credit. And so you guys are almost invisible, going to meetings, doing it for free, and just volunteering to get back to help our students and our community. So, I definitely wanna say thank you very much for the work that you all do.
Appreciate it.
And, I think, was that it? Am I the last one? Alright, you cleared all, so we know, make sure. No, I just wanted to say thank you as well and, uh, very thorough report as Dr. Flores said, and it's, it's awesome. And I hope the public could see this as well. If they go in and look at how their funds are being used to improve our schools for our kids. And, um, and I wanna thank the community as well for voting on those bonds and supporting us, uh, to be able to offer, you know, nicer environment for our kids to learn and our staff to work and our community also enjoys. So, great job. Like, uh, Ms. Tillman said, uh, it's very rare that volunteers get acknowledged for what they do, cuz you're always the people behind the scenes. And the work is tremendously appreciated. Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Wanted to thank you for coming back. We appreciate you. We didn't seem to get you in last time and you're patiently came back. So, thank you for that.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Gorgeous report. Alright, Building Fund Financial Performance Audit Report, Audits Report for Fiscal Year 2021 and 20, uh, 2020 through 2021 and Approval. Mr. Solans.
Thank you, Board President Dr. Wyatt, and I will check that Mr. Park is online. Okay. So, with that, I'd like to welcome Mr. Andrew Park from our third-party audit firm, uh, from ID Bailey, who will be presenting the Board with our Building Fund Financial and Performance Audits that was referenced in the last presentation for the 2021 fiscal year.
Alright, so I'll take it away. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Sounds like we're good to go. Um, yeah, so good evening. Uh, pleasure to be here, virtually. I don't know if I could top the COC members' presentation and summarize basically the results of the audit that I'll be presenting currently. But, just to quickly summarize the results of the audit. So, the audit is a two-part audit. Basically provides assurance on the financials related to your Measure TNN. And the second half of the report basically provides assurance on the district's compliance with, with how the funds are used. Basically, were the funds, answering the question of were the funds used in accordance with what the voters have approved for. So just to quickly summarize the results of the audit, with respect to the financials, and this is as of June 30, 2021, we provided the highest level of assurance as it relates to the district's financial statements related to Measure TNN. Um, this is what we would call an unmodified opinion, okay? Highest level of assurance. In other words, we believe that the financial statements related to Measure TNN are fairly stated in all material respects. Moving on to the compliance aspect of both Measure TNN, based on the audit procedures that we perform, we did not identify any type of exceptions where the district deviated from how the funds were to be spent. In other words, the district spent the funds in accordance to what the voters have approved for, both Measure TNN. We didn't, we don't have anything to report as it relates to the compliance of both of these funds. That pretty much summarizes the results of the audit, just to really quickly summarize it. Do I have any questions?
Thank you for the report. Now it looks like Board Vice President, Mr. Tillman, does have his light on.
Well, I do wanna thank you for, uh, the report. And the page I go to in an audit is, uh, a blank page in this case, which is a good thing. It's the findings on page, um, uh, 28. So there were no findings, right?
Right, as it relates to the compliance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, I don't see any other questions or comments. So, Mr. Park, thank you for your time and thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on to 7.3, California School Dashboard, Local Indicators Report. And let's see, that is Ms. Applegate.
Thank you, Board President Wyatt, and good evening once again, once again, Board. I will be reporting on the local indicators that are not necessarily listed in the California School Dashboard. The state does require us annually to report those local indicators to you. So what you see, you do have a report in front of you. Looks like this. And so that lists the different local indicators. These indicators were worked on by several of our management in different departments. They came together, everybody from multilingual to elementary facilities, all of our-
We don't have the list in front of us, but I believe it's the one that's online too, alright?
Yes, it's online. But did they not get a copy?
No, we didn't get a copy.
Not a hard copy. You should've had a hard copy too.
It was on, it was online. I read it.
But it's, it's on, it's on the agenda. You can just click on it and you'll open it up.
We're okay.
Karen's gonna give you a hard copy.
Is it titled "Local Indicators" for the California School Dashboard?
Yes, "Local Indicators," correct.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
Okay, so we do have different, the ones that are, that say priorities, those are the different indicators that we've chosen locally. It's an additional accountability measure on top of the student academic achievement that we get on the, on the regular California dashboard. So on the California dashboard, you see everything from A through G, high school graduation, all the student achievement data. So these are in addition to. The first priority you can see is basic conditionings of, of learning. And making sure that our teachers are credentialed, they're not misassigned, that all of our students have access to our standards-aligned curriculum and materials, that our school facilities are maintained in good repair. The second priority has to, deals with access also to the state standards. Again, that the teachers are fully credentialed in the subject areas that they're teaching. And then, um, priority three is parent involvement and family engagement. And it speaks to the input that we seek from our parents, all the different surveys that we give. Priority six is the school climate. Again, uh, dealing with safety and school connectedness. There are surveys that are given to the students and to families to get that information. And priority seven is access to abroad courses study. So making sure that all of our students, um, are studying the adopted courses that the state has, has, um, adopted for them. So on page three, you will see, when you get your copy or online, on page three, there is a rating scale from one to five. We have met all of our local indicators. The majority of our scores are in the four and the fives that you'll see in the table if you access that. So we have, um, completely complied with what our responsibilities are for these indicators. And we will have an updated California dashboard in late fall, once we get the assessment information in. Okay? And so that's for your information. And so you'll have the report in front of you as well.
Alrighty, any questions for Ms. Applegate? Looks like folks are still perusing over it. I know I am. Alright, Dr. Daddy Rogers?
My mic is off. So these numbers, just going to the rating, I'm finding, oh, there you are. Uh, the rating scale numbers, is, were these, this is what the state's numbers are, and then we?
Yes, that's correct. These are, this is the tool that's provided to rate the different priorities.
And this is what they also show online and indicate this is where, or is this online? This is online, right? Okay, and they show-
The tables that will show more in detail, the different areas and how they were rated.
And, what's the, the highest score? A five?
A five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Dr. Flores?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Applegate, um, these are tied to our KPIs, correct? These indicators?
These are additional accountability measures on top of all the ones that are on the California dashboard. And, and we chose them locally. So this is something that we do.
So these are the ones that we chose above what were required?
Above and beyond what's required.
With what required to, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. So that we are, you know, so that the public knows that we're being more accountable and going beyond, uh, in terms of, of, uh, meeting our goals.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Applegate. We're gonna move on to 7.4, Universal Pre-Kindergarten Implementation Plan.
Sorry, I had a question.
Oh, oh, I'm, oh, Ms. Savios, I'm so sorry. Mr. Tillman wasn't, you know, helping me out over there. Ms. Savios.
Hey, I kinda turned it on a little late, anyway. So, th- thank you for this, um, Ms. Applegate. I, I was looking over, um, some information. Again, I'm still trying to, like, figure a lot of, this is a lot of information, right? And so, um, I understand that the state has certain, um, areas that they want districts to report on, um, that they collect across the board. Right? And usually they do that through, like, state testing and things like that, right? These are more subjective, I guess, where they couldn't collect that information, um, the same way across the board. That's why they're left to local or LEAs to figure out for themselves, how are we gonna collect this data, right? Okay, perfect. I'm, I'm understanding. I'm following. I guess, some of the questions that I have, and, and, you know, again, trying to digest all of this information and just, over a weekend, it's, it's, it's a lot. But, how do we go? Can you just point me really quickly, maybe to one example on here? As to what was utilized to measure a priority, one of these priorities?
So there, there are tables and there are some criteria that is used. For instance, if you see on page three, where it talks about professional development, and it talks about professional learning, making sure that common core state standards are implemented in language arts. There are rubrics that we look to see, and it has to do with textbook adoptions, it has to do with the lessons that are delivered, with the standards. Um, and so we look at all the different things that we're doing, like the curriculum guides, which are standard-based. So we look for evidence that we in fact are doing these things, and so then they're rated.
Okay, thank you. And, and for instance, like, on parent involvement, for example, or on school climate, I see here that, um, like, for school climate, you have things like surveys, right? So you're serving students, parents, teachers. These surveys, are these once a year? Are these multiple times a year? Um, how are we?
Have to get back to you on that. That's Dr. Rodriguez's division. They do a lot of the, the, um, surveys, panorama surveys, the family engagement surveys. So I can get that information and bring that back to you.
And that would also be parental involvement? That would be under her, her area? Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Savios, and thank you, Ms. Applegate. We will move on to 7.4, Universal Pre-Kindergarten Implementation Plan. And it looks like we have, Miss, oh, no!
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. I, I am actually going to be introducing Ms. Amy Coker, our Director of Elementary Instruction. And she will be giving you an update as to the work that's been completed to date on our, our TK expansion, which was a several department, interdepartmental effort. So, Ms. Coker, if you were there, go ahead and take it away.
I am, thank you so much. Um, unfortunately, I cannot see the screen that's being shared, though, with the presentation. So, David, do you have that up?
Yeah, I have that, Amy.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, so, good evening, um, community. Um, good evening, um, Dr., um, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, um, Board and Cabinet. Um, my name is Amy Coker and I am the Director of Elementary Instruction. And I am very excited to share with you, um, the work, as, um, Ms. Applegate mentioned, the collective work, really, that's been taking place, to support the expansion of transitional kindergarten programs. Uh, so before I begin, I just really want to thank the forty-person committee who gathered across divisions, um, who also, um, contributed from the community and also volunteered from the school sites, and who really came together to work to really ensure that our families, um, are provided high-quality programs, um, the space and the support to, um, have this rich opportunity for our young scholars. And so I would also like to thank the Cabinet and Ms. Applegate for her leadership in this effort. Um, we, we all feel very supported, so thank you. Next slide, David. So to begin, I would like to read, um, a bit about how we see, um, transitional kindergarten, how we define this as a robust program. SBCUSD, Universal Transitional Kindergarten, provides opportunities for students to develop foundational skills through areas such as oral language, print, play, and exploration. These dynamic skills support the whole child and the readiness to prepare students for an educational program, kindergarten, and beyond. So, as you know, um, transitional kindergarten was originally built to serve a population of students, um, with, that fell within a, um, range of, of birth dates. And, um, and now we are expanding. And so what we have done in San Bernardino is we, we actually, up to this point, have already built a wonderful program for our transitional kindergarten students, and we are so excited to be expanding that program. Um, but I also, with that, um, I wanna, um, give a huge shout-out to our teachers, who really are absolutely amazing, um, and we are very proud of their work. Um, if you get a chance to visit our transitional kindergarten, um, programs, you'll see how really and truly they are very incredible. Um, in addition, I want to also acknowledge, um, the current work and future work that we have, um, with Ms. Kelly, the Preschool Director. And, um, with, that has only strengthened our work and our alignment for PK programs all the way up to third grade, which is something we're, um, continuing to work on, um, that will continue to lead, um, again, to the future and the readiness of our, um, students. Next slide, David. So as I mentioned, um, the eligibility for TK, um, had been within a very small window of birth dates. Um, and knowing the positive impact of early childhood programs, the Governor now has asked all districts to expand transitional kindergarten, um, to open up to all four-year-olds by the year of, um, twenty-five, twenty-six. So all four-year-olds can be eligible, um, to enroll in transitional kindergarten. That means that families who have children that fall in their range can, and older students, and it's, it's not based on income, um, and all students will be eligible to have a year before kindergarten, um, thanks to this, um, this important initiative. Next slide. So what we're doing in our district is we're, um, working on a phase and model that was designed, um, by the state. And so we are following this model. So last year, uh, before, the year twenty-one, twenty-two, just to give you, um, an idea of what that looks like, it was for students who turned five between September 2nd and December 2nd. Those were the students that were eligible for transitional kindergarten. Um, this upcoming school year, that eligibility has increased by two months. And so now it is for students who turn, um, five between September 2nd and February 2nd. That eligibility will keep increasing by two months for each year, um, until, um, twenty-five, twenty-six, where all four-year-olds will be eligible, um, to enroll. Um, in addition to that, and the, um, the lower row, you would see that, um, current, last year, our class size was, um, one teacher per twenty students. Um, now that, um, that ratio has changed, okay? So we still will have one, um, classroom teacher as the instructor, but we will also have the support, uh, an instructional aide who will help support the program. Um, and that will, um, and so we are hiring, um, instructional aides in addition to the classroom teachers to help support, um, our learners. Next slide. So what has happened in, um, order to plan for this important work, and, um, and this planning is ongoing, just so you know, and, um, so that we will, um, be able to be well-prepared for our scholars. Um, we actually have a, had, um, established five different workgroups, and this was a template that was provided to us by the California Department of Education, so we follow that template. Um, we looked at roles and responsibilities of the committee and we divided accordingly. So some of the workgroups, we met, we met together, but we also met separately, um, which we are continuing to do, um, to be able to support the work. So, Group A, um, we had a vision and coherence group. And, just to kinda backpedal, um, one second, so the, the main deliverable that we wanted to deliver at the end of this year was really a plan for the upcoming year. Um, as I did mention, that this, um, work is ongoing, so we will continue to convene as, um, we move into the future. Um, Group A is, um, vision and coherence, and this, uh, team was led by Mrs. Applegate, um, Ed Services and also Student Services, as well as teachers, um, were on this committee and its, and some administrators. And we looked at systems and structures that were put in place, uh, to support the model. Um, we identified sites that could host transitional kindergarten based on location within the city, so they would be with, uh, in several locations, um, throughout the city. Um, many of the schools that we are having for this upcoming year are, um, the same, um, some of the same schools that we had in the prior year. Um, one of the things that we did do, um, is recreated an AMPM partnership. And so that, um, that there is a shared classroom space for an AM, um, classroom as well as a PM. And the reason why, um, this will serve a couple purposes. Number one, we want, um, knowing that we are, um, onboarding several new transitional kindergarten programs, we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to work alongside of a partner and plan together, um, and be able to support one another. And then, secondly, uh, we wanted to allow that time and space as we continue the partnership with facilities, um, to, um, as they, as we expand, to meet the demands of increased numbers of students that will take place throughout the, um, transition periods. Um, just to reiterate, the Transitional Kindergarten Day, uh, will be, it's continuing as it was before, a half-day program, two hundred minutes. Um, and they also, um, what's really exciting is that we are partnering with, um, Mrs. Period- Um, and they also, um, what's really exciting is that we are partnering with um, Mrs. Pearson and um, Expanded Learning as well. And she'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. Um, so that we actually have an opportunity for our families to enroll in Expanded Learning, um, so that they, um, families may receive um, the CAPS and um, program um, when they're not in the instructional program. And so I'm going to let Ann go ahead and talk a minute about that.
Hello, hopefully my mics are working. There's a new AirPods, so can everyone hear me okay? Awesome. So good evening, uh, Board President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board and Cabinet. My name is Ann Pearson and I am the Director of Expanded Learning, which includes Sunrise and CAPS. And these are very exciting times, um, both for our TK as well as Expanded Learning. So um, just really thanking uh, Amy for making sure we were included with this. Lots of great partnership, thank you so much. Um, because of our ELOP funding, uh, which I shared with the Board on May third, the Expanded Learning is going to look a little different now. So the biggest difference we're talking about tonight is including TK in the Expanded Learning Program as well as expanding our reach with our kindergarten students. Um, and first, we'll be mimicking the smaller teacher-student ratio in CAPS that is going to be um, starting as well that Ms. Coker just talked about. So for CAPS and Sunrise, the after-school and before-school programs for both kindergarten and TK, the state has um, told us we need to have a ten to one ratio. And so that will start when we come back to school in August. The second big change is actually to the Sunrise program. You know, currently Sunrise is only offered at twenty-one schools. They're all elementary. Well, we are expanding to all elementary schools this year for Sunrise. And then when we go to late start, we're also going to be offering that to our secondary schools as well. But what this means for our TK is traditionally Sunrise is about an hour and a half in the morning. Um, the kiddos would come in about seven fifteen, then they'd go to breakfast, and then they'd go to class. However, the ELOP funding requires us to offer um, nine hour days. So what does this look like for our youngest scholars? Um, so it could look like at schools with the PM, TK, and Kinder, um, that Ms. Coker just spoke about, Sunrise could be as long as five hours before they start their traditional school day. They could come to Sunrise starting at seven fifteen. But since their PM class does not begin until after lunch, those students could be in Sunrise until about twelve-thirty-ish, depending on when the school has their um, TK and Kinder go to lunch. For AM, TK, and Kinder, their day may look like Sunrise from seven fifteen to breakfast time. Then they go to the regular school session in the morning. And then they would return to CAPS for aft, right after lunch, about twelve-thirty. And then they could stay till six if um, that's what the parents needed. So that's a little um, different than we've usually done. Um, and we're really hoping this helps our parents out. I know all of my s, um, all of my kids went through San Bernardino City Unified and it was tough when they had half-day kindergarten, um, you know, to get someone to pick them up and all of that. So I'm really, I remember that as a parent, so I'm really hoping this is going to help all our parents for that. So Expanded Learning is also viewing this longer day as an amazing opportunity for our littlest scholars. We have created a TK kindergarten specialist position in Expanded Learning. We are working with our CBOs that we have contracted for services to intentionally choose youth leaders that are excited about working with TK and K and have a lot of patience. In addition, Expanded Learning will be working closely with Elementary Instruction, Ms. Coker and her team, to arrange additional training and early childhood education for our youth leaders that are contracted through our vendors. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this and I'm excited to see what we're going to have in store for all of them coming next year. So turning it back over to Ms. Coker.
Thank you, Ms. Pearson. We have a quick question by Vice President Tillman, it looks like, as well as Dr. Flores.
Ms. Pearson, so this scenario you, that you're discussing about the nine hour day? And two questions, is that going to start this upcoming school year?
Correct, uh, first day of school.
And is that going to be for, I heard you say it's for the um, students participating in the uh, Transitional Kindergarten? But is it also going to apply to the other students in terms of that nine hour day for of K through, I'm assuming it's going to be what, K through sixth grade?
Yes, correct. So um, we'll be offering before and after school to all of them. It's just going to little, look a little different for our scholars that only go half-day. They'll have a little more time in CAPS.
And then the big question is, uh, when will we have a realistic idea of whether or not we're going to be able to hire enough people to fulfill this goal?
Uh, so currently, we have um, ordered contracts uh, to almost every cluster. The final two clusters are going to the July uh, Board Meeting. Um, we've had our first introductory mandatory CBO uh, meeting. And they have been telling me that they're very confident. We were able with this ELOP funding to raise salaries of our youth leaders and our site leads, which all of the CBOs are reporting has been extremely helpful, not only in recruiting, but in retaining um, those individuals.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next question from Dr. Flores and then Ms. Rosales Medina.
I just want to commend you, uh, because this is big. This is really big in terms of offering these services for our families, but then also the kids. So I'm really interested, you don't have to tell me now, but I mean, the opportunities are great in terms of engaging the kids uh, in lots of incredible activities. Um, and so I know you're probably already designing them and so forth. Uh, and maybe even opportunities for them to play, uh, and explore and experiment and things that, you know, we have abandoned in, in the past. But um, I, are you guys planning like stuff like that?
Absolutely. My program specialists are so excited. They um, have been lesson planning already for the upcoming year because we will be providing all lesson plans, just like we did for spring break and summer school. Um, we've gotten excellent reports back. Um, kids are so uh, involved and um, actively participating in our summer school programs as well with esteem, um, really good responses. So we're just going to continue moving forward with that.
Oh, that's wonderful. I'm just so excited. Please invite me to come or let me know when you're ready and so forth. Because I really would love to see all the, you know, exciting things that you're doing with the kids and the parents. Yeah, so thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Ms. Rosales Medina.
No, I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, I spoke to a parent yesterday that is actually coming from Redlands that because of the, the news that they're, they heard regarding the extended learning um, opportunities that they actually transfer their students from Redlands to our school district. So I think this is a great opportunity to start recruiting. Um, so the mess, the more messages that we send out either through social media or out there, they're hearing it, they're seeing it. Um, I think this is great, thank you.
Thank you. And I know Ms. Coker is already working on that um, advertisement, I believe.
All righty, Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Thank you. And thank you for this presentation, we appreciate it. I just had a quick question on, I don't know what the page is, but it's the page with the number of students. Um, and I noticed that there's a projected number to, from the five sixty to eight eighty-seven. And that, why is that a projected number? First, let me just have you explain it to me.
So that is the number that we've been given um, by the California Department of Education. And so what they have done is they've given us projections, uh, low, medium, and high for each year um, as we continue to expand out. And so that is um, the number that um, that we're working with at this point, uh, um, based on what um, they're telling us that we would um, be expecting.
And is that number that they're telling us based on information that they know locally about our city?
Yeah, it's based on birth rates and, and so, um, and other, um, other types of reports. I believe in the plan, I gave you a link as well. And so you're certainly welcome to take a look at that.
Okay, and so I think my last question then would be, I guess, and I'll hopefully, does the link provide information on our student population that they projected? Or is it just a mass number?
Um, let me just make sure I understand the question. It is um, provided specifically for San Bernardino City Unified School District.
And the, and the reason why I ask that question is because for, for a number of years since I've been on the Board, I'm always concerned about the outreach um, to our student populations. And in particular, our African-American students, getting them enrolled in TK has always been a huge, huge issue. So I just often wonder about the outreach, the marketing, what, how do we do that? I know in my regular day job, we work a lot with preschool services and I know that's something that they do, um, you know, want to continue to collaborate. But we, we really, I just challenge what, what the methods that they use to make sure they're reaching those populations that ultimately come, you know, a little bit behind the eight ball.
Yes, um, I um, understand completely in the fact that we are working very closely with Mr. Buckner and Enrollment and Placement, um, to continue to um, to reach out to families. Um, Mr., we did a social media campaign, um, as well as we're informing the sites. And um, when I do go to sites, I do see flyers um, posted. Um, and the um, the staff is communicating to families, um, sending home flyers and so forth. Um, but we, I spoke with Mr. Buckner earlier today and we did talk about continuing that outreach even as the beginning of the school year begins. Um, once we um, start to um, get families on campus and um, making sure that we're utilizing our open houses and so forth, so that the word does get out to our families. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Coker, if I may add a couple of things to those, uh, with regard to the uh, enrollment publicity. Uh, yeah, Doc, or Mr. Leonard Buckner, he has been performing that outreach since March of this year. And he's actually done book fairs and uh, sent out mailers as well as the items that Ms. Coker had mentioned. And then also regarding the enrollment projection, just wanted to make a quick clarification. The CDE recognizes that the accurate enrollment for TK probably isn't going to come out until the fiscal year of twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The way uh, we factor enrollment for uh, school projections is we're using a three-year rolling average. So assuming that we have the full implementation on the fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six, three years after that, we'll have that data. Uh, also, including the information that Ms. Coker talked about with birth rates, we're also looking at developer um, within the city boundaries, movements within as well as movements outside of the, of the city. But the key point that the CDE recognizes that up until that twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year, it's most likely going to be a best guess. But we do work with uh, some of the state's best demographers uh, and we work with that information to compile all that information together.
Thank you for that.
All right.
All righty. Couple more slides, I think, right?
Yes, a couple more. And so I was going to mention that that was a really good lead-in, you know, that we have been working, I can think of back to, uh, David, to the other slide. I want to make sure that I hit those other work groups as well. And that we have been working again with Mr. Buckner. And we even did an um, an enrollment fair alongside Mr. Buckner and um, and Ms. Kelly, um, to be able to really market, to be able to um, discuss, to be able to pull in our families, um, to inform them about this opportunity. Um, but I also, I do want to let you know, um, and I've said it many times, that Ms. Kelly has been an absolute wonderful partner and we are continuing to learn from her as well and her team as we um, were, begin to work with our um, earliest learners. So I'm going to let Ms. Kelly go ahead and share.
Good evening, Board. My name's Latasha Kelly, Director for the Child Development Program. And the vision for our preschool program is to provide a safe, warm, and accepting environment devoted to the growth and development of all of our children. With an added emphasis on teaching our children acceptance of themselves and others and providing a rich and age-appropriate curriculum. So for the twenty-twenty our four-year-olds that are not eligible for TK and also the four-year-old students whose parents select to enroll in state preschool program. In addition, we will continue to expand the opportunities for three-year-olds. And we will also continue to partner with Elementary Instruction to bridge the TK to three um, grade program for our students and our family. Amy?
All right, thank you, Ms. Kelly. Um, what, I'm going to go ahead and move to Work Group C. And um, we're, I'm sorry, and Work Group B, I apologize. Um, the screen is very small, my eyes aren't very good. Um, Work Group B is um, looking at community engagements and partnerships. And so what we have done is um, we have worked with many of the parent councils um, and represented at parent councils, um, along with um, Ms. Pearson. I think you and I were together quite a bit and Ms. Sargent for a bit of time to present and make sure that the families were aware of this opportunity and also to gain input from the families as we continue to develop and grow this program. Um, I'm also working very closely with Dr. Gonzalez, um, from Family Engagement. Um, and we, and Ms. Kelly, again, um, what we're going to do is we're going to, we're planning parent workshops. Um, so when student, and when parents do enroll their students, um, that, our newest families also receive some um, some, you know, um, some opportunities to learn and to be able to know how to support their littlest learners and also make sure that they know about the opportunities that are available within our district. Um, as far as Work Group um, C, that's workforce and then get, and recruitment. Um, as you would imagine, um, we are in need of a very specialized workforce to make sure that our youngest scholars are well taken care. And so um, currently, um, the requirement is the same as what we would have for kindergarten teachers in the fact that they would have a multiple subject credential. But the um, CDC is also asking them to have um, twenty-four units in early childhood education. Um, and so what, and that can be something that they gain after um, employment. So what we have done, um, Ms. Clark, um, Ms. Dion Clark and her team really have been working on actively seeking out candidates who have an interest in this area. And the most exciting thing is we've actually enjo, um, joined in on a can, a grant um, with the county and on their consortium to call the Early Education Teacher Development Grant. Um, Ms. Kelly and I worked um, together with um, James Johnson to be able to write to how we are going to um, develop a pathway for our teachers um, who are prospective teachers who want to teach um, Transitional Kindergarten. And um, and they will receive um, some tuition support um, if we are granted this grant. So we're very excited to be working with the county on that as well. Um, and it will be very critical, you know, as, to develop that workforce as we continue to grow. Um, in the next area, um, the next group is Curriculum Instruction, Professional Learning. And this was again, working with my team as well as um, educators, administrators, other district, um, department partners. And we wanted to, again, as we continue to grow, um, we wanted to make sure that our teachers are well-prepared um, to teach Transitional Kindergarten. So once they're hired, we want to make sure we have robust professional learning for them. Um, but we also want to make sure they have um, um, materials in addition to their eh, experiential learning. And so um, we have um, adopted a curriculum um, to help support um, the, um, it's really the integration across subject areas. Um, that includes lots of oral language, um, circle time, um, play, um, and literature um, that will help support to our youngest learners. Um, finally, I'm going to go ahead and um, give it over to um, Mr. Precy, who's going to speak very briefly about facilities and how we're preparing for so.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Coker. Yeah, so for the Facilities and Operations Work Group, uh, there's quite a bit of work that we've done as far as research goes. And as you're aware with facilities work, much of it is a very long timeline. So there's still much more work to be done. Uh, but our focus was researching the Assembly Bill one thirty, which is the TK Expansion Bill, as well as the Title V requirements in the California Code of Regulations, which covers the school uh, facilities construction um, with regard to educational specifications and the requirements for different spaces, in this case for TK. Uh, we also contracted with a leader in school design and planning, and that's LPA Architects. And thank you, Board, for your support in approving that contract. Uh, that's to assist the District of Development of the District-Wide Facilities Master Plan uh, with regard to the Transitional Kindergarten Program. So back in the March of two thousand nineteen, you approved the District-Wide Facility Master Plan. This is an amendment to that approved Facilities Master Plan. And we will come back to the Board at a later date with that for your, your review and approval and adoption. Uh, the team also performed side assessments, understanding what our current conditions are, looking at the enrollment projections as well as demographics, and then defining what all of our existing spaces are with regard to implementing and phasing in uh, the new TK role. So we're looking into three different categories of potential areas for need. And that's going to be looking at the construction of potential regional TK facilities. The first one we're looking at is the Cardinal Center, uh, which the name still needs to be vetted. And that's going to be for those schools and facility areas that don't have available space, so they're already at capacity. Uh, the second category that we're looking at is conversion of existing facilities and movement of grades into compliant, Title V compliant spaces. And then addition to an expansion of the existing facilities for schools with or without a current TK program. And then, as I mentioned, at a later date, we'll go ahead and And then, as I mentioned, at a later date, we'll go ahead and bring the amendment to the Facilities Master Plan with regard to the TK. Back to the Board. Ms. Coker, I'll transfer back to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Precy. And we did have a question, I think, previous to Mr. Precy, if I'm Ms. Sabios.
Yes, thank you, it's okay. I just I you might have mentioned it, but I had to step out to the restroom real quick. I had too much water tonight. But for the current sites of where we're offering this, it's listed here as 24 sites. It's projected to increase to 30 sites. What sites are those? Do we have a list to break down somewhere?
Yeah, I included it in the plan that I believe that you have access to. And Ms. Applegate, they I believe they have access to that plan by email. Yeah.
Yes. Was it was it in the email? Because it's not in this, I might have missed it.
It was in the email, yeah. And I can certainly get that to you as well if you'd like. And there's actually 29, actually 30 sites.
Okay, and then how do we go about choosing those sites?
We worked with facilities, as well as we wanted to ensure that there were areas within the around the community to make sure that there's hubs that were accessible to families. And in addition to space, that was and also enrollment.
So they're 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 distributed across the district well enough to for for easy access, even if, you know, it's not at your school site or homeschool site?
Correct, we did it in hubs, and so that they would be close in proximity.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, we looked at the school sites that already had the half-day TKs, so we could easily add the other half-day to that. So we doubled the program where we already had the room. And then they have a longer-term facilities plan for to create structures for that.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. And we have a question from Vice President Tillman, please.
I'm kind of a little confused. Over the last few years, the concern has been about decreasing enrollment. So how many students are we down?
Or the overall projections we're going to be bringing in about? I'm sorry, what was the exact question?
I'm talking about TK. I'm talking about in the general sense, the concern about funding has been that our district has had declining enrollment. How many students are we down, let's say, from two years ago?
About 1,800 or so, or 2,000, Harold?
Yeah, so to answer the question, and we typically decline about a half a percent every year, which is a little approximately 250 students. However, during COVID, it was accelerated. In the single year 2021, we declined over 2,000 students, and we have not regained those students.
Right, and what percentage of those were elementary-age students?
I'd have to get the exact number. However, we do know that a great proportion of those students were elementary-age students, primarily the kinder kinder age, because it's not compulsory, so parents could keep them out.
And that's why I guess I'm kind of confused when we are adding, you know, these additional students, that was a problem finding space if we lost students for so long. Why would it be a problem finding space?
Space utilization is one item that we're going to be looking at as far as where our available space within the school sites are, and then the actual use of those spaces. But I would agree with you. We have capacity from a district perspective, from a classroom space of about 26,000 students, 26,000 to 28,000, give or take.
And I guess my my real concern, the thing that scares me, is when you say that there are going to be some sites that are not at the school sites, but at some other place. I don't know what the other place is. But because the the concern is going to be, if I have a parent that has two students going to an elementary school, and I want to tell them that the TK student is not going to go to that same elementary school, that's going to be a problem. So I'm hoping that we're doing everything possible to convert the existing sites to these 2K, the TK sites, rather than just think that for some reason that it's better to find a centralized location, because I know I'm going to get those calls. And if and I'm okay with the calls, as long as I'm not getting a call because there was space, but the district decided we're not going to do them at the site because we want to do Cardinal City. That really concerns me.
Yes, we understand your concern. And part of the issue is that there may be space at a school, but it's not compliant for what TK is requiring. So we are working on that as well. So we tried to occupy the space that's already compliant that we have right now. But then in the facilities plan, they're going to be working on modifying those classrooms to make them compliant so that we can keep them at the schools.
And what is it exactly? I didn't mean to cut you off, but what is exactly does it take to make, let's say, a first-grade class? What does it take to make a first-grade class a TK-incompliance class?
Yeah, actually, Title V has various specific requirements for K as well as TK. There's they're basically stating that TK is going to adopt the K requirements, because CDE currently doesn't have a TK requirement for Title V. So that's going to be 13 and 15, 1350 square feet. First grade would be 960 square feet. So we're actually going to have to add space. So when you're looking at a block of three classrooms in order to get two TK classrooms, we would then have to take three standard classrooms and provide, basically split them into two to add your 1350 square feet. We also have to have requirements for office space for the for the administration of those TK classrooms, restrooms within those classrooms or within the TK complex, or in this case, kindergarten complex. We also have to have close proximity to the parking or drop-off. And then we also have to have close proximity to the playground area, which is going to have to have age-appropriate furniture, sinks, restrooms, as well as the playground structures.
So I hope that, Mr. Salmons, that we've done an assessment, and we're clear on the capacity that we have. What I don't want to do is say that it is open to everyone, but we don't have the capacity. If it takes us a year, we're better off being realistic with the parents and only offering it to the parents that we have the capacity for versus telling folks, because we don't have it right now. So even though it's been mandated and the state says you can do it, what you described is not something you snap your finger and you get overnight. So we need to be realistic about what our actual true capacity is. And I I hope that we realize that before we put out the word that come one, come all.
Correct, and and Mr. Tillman, to your point, 100%. So the universal TK plan is not a single-year plan. It is phased-in approach from the governor, and it's exactly for those reasons. So districts can scale up to provide and support what the demand or the need will be for those communities. So we're right there with you, and that's part of the reason we're doing that master plan, to see what it is that we need to convert our spaces, to support and build it out so that we are not in the situation where the families are interested, but we're not able to take them in.
Right, so if you guys can come to us, where I don't know how far you are in the process, but, you know, in the meeting, maybe not the next meeting, but we want to do it before school starts, you guys give us a realistic picture about how many spots we actually have available and how we're going to offer those out, and the sites, because I think it's going to come down to some sites probably have more space available than others, right? And some sites, some sites are probably easier to convert and make compliant than others. So that's what we should hear about. And but I want to make sure we have a a message to parents about the reality of where we're at. I'm assuming that there's no transportation involved in in this group of students? So so that the any parent that is going to have their student go here, they have to provide their own transportation? And that's even if they have a kinder student on a bus, then right now, there's we're saying that no, as the law says, there's no that no TK students can ride the bus?
I don't know that it's a specific law that says TK can't ride the bus. I believe that we do currently have TK riding the bus.
We do. Yeah, we have TK riding bus, and we will provide transportation to the TK students for those that are outside of the distancing requirement, or perhaps their homeschool doesn't have a TK offering, but yet they wish to participate in the TK.
And and how about the students whose siblings are in a program and getting bused already? Are we going to make accommodations for them?
Probably defer to Harold on that.
And because this is a big deal. If I have a parent that has a sixth grader and a third grader going to a school already, and you're going to tell them, yeah, they can go there, and there's space on the bus, but the you guys are going to say, the board said you can't. So the board is not saying that. I'm saying that if the if the capacity is on there, and we already allow TK to ride the bus, if their siblings are going to that site, and we're going to offer it, then we should allow that sibling to go to that site on that bus.
Yes, and and I think it has been the district practice that if we have siblings going to a school, we do everything in our power to make sure that we can accommodate.
I just want to make sure that we're going to include TK in that.
We will.
Thank you.
All right. David, do you want to pop that up? Okay, go ahead, David, to the next slide. And and again, this is what we're looking at, just as a kind of a summary as to where we're at right now in 2021, 22. These were the numbers that we had. And then this is what we, again, we are projected to have in our program 22, 23. And so this is what we're working towards. And again, one of the differences is that we will have the support of instructional aides in the classrooms as well. And Dr. Funches and his team, along with Ms. Clark, are working very hard to to make that happen. All right, next slide. And so again, the next steps is we're going to continue to work as a TK work group, designing programs, locations, exactly what was just spoken about for the next few years until we have the ability to open up to all four-year-olds and meet the demand that has been established for us. In addition to that, we will continue to work with the county via the Early Educator Effectiveness Grant to support educators who are in pursuit of teaching transitional kindergarten. And then again, we will continue the collaboration with Ms. Kelly and the preschool programs, partnering also with agencies and organizations to support teacher development and also opportunities for our families. And last slide, I just want to share some of the feedback we have been getting as we meet with parent groups. We one of the questions we ask them is, what are you excited about? Opportunities for children, giving kids the head start in their education so that they are able to build those social skills, and the potential to provide an equitable start to kindergarten for our families. And then, last but not least, the opportunities for early childhood and high-quality educational experiences. So again, I want to thank every person who worked so hard on this committee, including Mrs. Rebecca Clark, who isn't here today. I want to thank her as well. But I appreciate the support of the Cabinet and the Board and the community as we continue to move forward.
All righty, Ms. Coker, thank you very much. I don't see any other. Oh, wait, I spoke too soon, Ms. Sabios.
Again, just really quickly, the this plan is for three years out, right? 2023, 24, 25, and it's it's built for three years out, correct?
Through 2526.
Okay, okay, and I guess, you know, kind of going back to what Mr. Tillman was talking about, is the plan for the district to provide a TK program at every school site? Is that the plan, or is that not something that's being considered? Oh, okay. Because and and the reason why I ask that is because it goes back to, you know, equity, right? We want to make sure that all of our schools have the same programs, at least to a bare minimum, right? That have programs that are not going to cost us providing, you know, transportation to one side versus another, that then adds to other issues, you know, and things like that that we've discussed here before. So just want to make sure that that is the plan of the district, where we are going to be providing sites to every school site. That is our plan eventually in the long run. However, we were held responsible to come up with a plan for this next school year. We had to come up with that plan. We were required to do that. So we had to move quickly. They did a complete audit, facilities did a complete audit to see where we could house programs now so that we could expand. Also, the funding hasn't come through yet. We've gotten a small amount of funding, which was mainly for planning. So down the road, there's more funding that's going to be committed to TK. We just don't, we haven't seen it, we haven't gotten it. So we had to do what we could do just to make sure that we have this plan in place for next year, because by June 30th, we were supposed to present the county with a plan for this next school year. And so we've moved as quickly as we can and found all those spaces that we could use now. Long term, that is the plan, but there will be more information coming about requirements, funding, all those different things. Just want to make sure that we, you know, that that is in the back of our minds, and, you know, hopefully, when we say the plan is to do that, we're not, you know, a decade later, we still don't have that, right? But I I understand about the funding and things like that.
So just for clarification, Mr. Salmons, on the funding, I'm assuming that this got passed in this last budget?
Correct, this was actually a 2122 budget initiative. And moving forward, so the current budget discussions are speaking to the augmentation of the program, the expansion. So what this would provide in eligibility is just similar to any K-12 student, TK would be eligible for ADA credit. So we would receive ADA funding, and then to help support some of the startup costs, specific to the facilities piece, there are facilities funds for TK facilities, as well as a TK add-on grant to help with some, again, some of the non-facilities-related startup.
Right, so even though Ms. Applegate said we don't have the funding yet, you know that everything's in place, so it'll be included in our apportements.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Just FYI, I've been following the governor's plan and the legislature, and it's incremental. And so I I'm assuming, given what you just presented, we're in line with the pace that the funds are going to be distributed. Is that correct?
Correct, so it is a phased plan. So as we take more students in, we we receive ADA for those students similar to, and as the program grows, obviously, our attendance and ADA factor would grow for that group as well.
Commensurate, Danny, with the phasing in. And so as we generate ADA, then that gives us additional funds to keep going. But then the legislature gives us additional funds as well to build it.
I'm assuming we're going to be conservative, and there will be people complaining about there's 30 kids in the class, so we make sure we don't have five kids in the class, right? And over-hire teachers, right?
Correct, and and that's going to be part of the the work is the outreach is really critical for these programs. And so as we see enrollments trending lower, it's going to be incumbent upon us to perform outreach to make sure that we are getting those students and we're maximizing those class sizes.
Exactly.
I would I would say we're limited, 30 might be a bit extreme because we have the the class size ratios, but yes, I get your point taken.
And right, and I didn't, just so people will start blowing me up, I don't mean that in a negative way, that that well, we have to make sure that we don't overstaff, because then we we the money will go away real quickly. So we have to be realistic. This, I'm only concerned it's a new program, so I don't know how you guys actually identify how many students are going to show up. You have to have teachers there for the students, but you have to balance it. You don't want to run the risk of hiring too many teachers. Maybe because we have some one-time funding, we can assume more risk this year, but in years out, we have to be very careful about aligning the hiring with the actual students.
Absolutely, we don't, we do not take the Field of Dreams approach. If you build it, they will come. We need to have some certainties.
Exactly my point, thank you.
Dr. Flores? All right, Ms. Coker and team, thank you for the presentation. That was a pretty extensive presentation, a lot of conversation, a lot of questions. But thank you for filling all those, and good to see you.
And I do want to take the time to thank Ms. Coker. She has led this effort along with Ms. Kelly, and it has been a monumental task that she's pulled all the departments together to work on. So thank you, Ms. Coker.
Oh, yeah, this is a lot of new information. Great, great job, and I'm sure we'll have many more questions to come. So Dr. Flores?
Yes, I also like to thank the team. I saw all the people that you included, and it's monumental. It's a big lift. So thank you for your leadership, all of you.
All righty, folks, we'll move on to 8.0, Board Discussion, 8.1 Administrator in Charge Rotation Plan. And thank you to the Executive Cabinet and team for And thank you to the Executive Cabinet and team for providing the schedule of the Administrator in Charge coverage that we're looking at. And Mr. Sol, I don't know if this is for Board discussion or you wanna have a comment before we get going?
Not not a comment per se, but what's in front of the Board is, as the superintendent is retiring, you know, absence of a interim or permanent replacement for superintendent, the district has come up with this rotational schedule for Administrator in Charge to continue to keep the continuity of operations moving forward. So this is just for the Board's review discussion, and the Board can take, you know, consensus on it.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Sol. And just, you know, for the folks that are out there, you know, in the public as well as our own staff are wondering, you know, what are next steps? And this is definitely next step, such as today, you know, superintendent runs out today. And as you can see, Mr. Sol is stepping in as Administrator in Charge, it'd be very similar to that as we look forward to, you know, hiring a permanent superintendent, which the Board plans on doing as quickly as possible, but also we wanna be fair to our community and fair to our district and fair to our Board, that, you know, our timeline on this is to look at hiring a superintendent after the elections when we have a new Board in place. So the superintendent also has a fair opportunity with the new Board too, so. So thank you for that. We also wanted to say as a Board too that we have the utmost confidence in our Executive Cabinet. That is why we believe in this plan and we believe in this rotation, you know, that we have outstanding talent here in our own district and that we we trust our Executive Cabinet to lead us in the interim as we continue our search. Dr. Rogers.
And Dr. White, I would add to that, just the communication piece to go along with it. I know that often individuals try to, you know, tune in and see us and, you know, I wouldn't want them to have to go through everything to. So hopefully, a summary of some sort and a collaboration with with the staff to get that out to everyone, so everyone, we can all be on the same page. So I would ask for that communication.
Absolutely, Dr. Rogers, I agree. And I know this discussion had taken place last week with Mr. Sol and Mr. Irvin. I had brought that up to them, and I don't see Ms. Ontiveros today, but I'm quite sure, Mr. Sol, that you can agree that we will get that out as soon as possible to staff, please.
Yes, sir, we were actually waiting to to have this information presented to the Board before we sent out an official communication.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Abios.
Thank you so much, and and I do wanna, you know, kinda chime in into this portion and discuss a little bit and share more than anything with the community that, at least my concerns. I know that this is something that we've had to put in place. It it's not really kind of, if if we don't put this in place, we really don't have anything in place. So it's kind of like a forced kinda kinda thing that we have to do. I would really, really encourage the Board to potentially hire an interim superintendent. I wouldn't feel comfortable as much, you know, confidence that I have in our staff. I wouldn't feel comfortable going through the whole next year with this rotation for many reasons. One of them, you know, it it makes accountability a little bit more more difficult, in all honesty. It puts more responsibility on our staff who are already, you know, have already heavy, heavy workloads. I would hope that, you know, again, that this Board does decide at some point that we can come together and agree to put an interim superintendent in place until we are able to come on the other side of the election and, you know, hire somebody permanently. I can't say that, you know, I'm entirely happy with with the outcomes, as you all know, and I've expressed expressed it multiple times. You know, we're we're here at this time, and I I think it could have been avoided. The rotating schedule does, will work for a short period of time. I hope that I can be proven wrong if we decide to do it the whole year. You know, if if it works out for the entire year, then great, I'll I'll say I was mistaken. I'm just mainly, you know, a little concerned that we didn't really think this through all the way. And and now we're kind of here forcefully, having to put this in place. Because, again, it's not like the superintendent's retirement was a surprise to us as the Board. So I think that we we should have put a little bit more thought into the aftermath, especially with, you know, COVID. We came out of some very, very difficult times, you know, worldwide pandemic, which has already put our students, you know, behind. And, you know, being in this situation now just puts us that much more further behind. And so, again, just in all transparency and honesty, just wanted to share and go on record that although this is what we have and we'll work with what we have, it's unfortunate that we're here. I am fully confident that you all can do the work, no problem. My main concerns are long-term goals, right? Again, this can put us through the year, but it's gonna put us behind long-term, right? At least that, in my opinion. And again, we have a lot of money coming in, a lot of one-time money coming in. And that money has specifically been given to us in addition to fill in those gaps in education for our students. And again, I just hope that that we're able to pull it off and put that money to to good use and be able to be on the other side with seeing the growth in our in our students. Because I'm not gonna lie, I am anxious. I am concerned. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abios. Mr. Tillman.
Very much. You know, I've been on the Board for 27 years, and this is not my first rodeo. And I have a lot of confidence in the district administrators and the classified employees and our teachers. Teaching happens in classrooms. When the students show up in the classroom, that's where the education starts. Everything we do we do around that is facilitate that. And we're in a period now, we're gonna do a search for a superintendent and a new leader. But I've been here long enough to know that we have some all-stars working for us. And a lot of the people that are on the dais today are gonna end up superintendents somewhere, if not in this district, in other districts. I've seen countless people leave our district and go on to become superintendents. And it's those folks that are here today are have the same caliber of those employees that are now superintendents in districts up and down the state and across our nation. So I have the utmost confidence in moving forward. I think this Board is the same Board that was here two years ago as it is today. And the 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 main thing about our Board is we care about our students. Nobody has ulterior motives. No one's trying to make money on the side. No one cares about anything but providing the best education possible. At this time, when you have times like this, having the right Board President means a lot. And I think with having Dr. White as President and being someone whose profession is education. And as the assistant suits rotate through, it's the position that has the authority. And whoever's in that role, as as tonight with Mr. Sol, is the acting superintendent, it's the position itself that has that authority. And then whoever's in that position at the time will be working and interacting with our President just as the any other superintendent would. So I and I and I can understand people don't have the years of experience of me having concern and angst and anxiety. But I have none of that. I know that we'll get through this process. We're gonna immediately start doing a search for the new superintendent now, starting now. So by the time this next election is up and we see the new the new Board member or new Board members, then they'll be ready to select with the help of the community and all our stakeholders in selecting the next superintendent. We'll we'll select that next superintendent and move forward. But I just wanna say that I have the utmost confidence in the employees of this district to continue providing an excellent education to our students. You heard it tonight, we're moving forward with a new program. There was no hesitation about how we're gonna move forward on that. And there'll be countless other projects and items that come up within the district that we will move forward on. In terms of funding and financing and spending money, I've been having this discussion from the beginning. It's not because there was a superintendent here that told me to ask Mr. Sol how much money we have and make sure we're gonna be in in line to spend the money and make sure any of the users lose the money, we take action on. That's not gonna change. It doesn't matter who's sitting there. I'm still gonna play my role in making sure that we instigate that. And each Board member brings a quality to the Board. And we offer and offer and enhance and bring qualities that benefit our students. It's not talked about enough, and you have a quality Board. And so I have no apprehension about moving forward. But I do wanna thank the assistant suits that are in line. The Board, I'm sure at some point, will make sure that everyone's fairly compensated and those type of things. But right now, I feel I'm real confident about where we're at as a district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Honestly, when I when I heard this option come forward, I thought it was a great opportunity. It's it's innovative in a way where we bring the brightest and strongest within our school district. And we cut out the middle person for right now temporarily, which which we're in the situation where we have them directly working and collaborating. I'm just really excited because they're talented. They have the experience. Many of me, many of them were elementary school principals. Many of them were high school principals. Many of them worked with our EL Students Department directly. I mean, they've worked with different departments directly. And so I'm really excited about the experience that they have. And I see this as an opportunity for great success. And and knowing that we are gonna be hiring, the district will be hiring and being in the process of hiring a superintendent. But just being able to utilize the talent that we have within a school district, I'm really excited and just wanted to share that. I don't see anything as a negative. And and if things starts to turn out, you know, know for a fact that the Board will make the necessary decisions to do so. But I'm honestly really confident in our our Cabinet to do an amazing job.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Dr. Flores.
I would like to add and talk to each of the Cabinet members. You have shown great leadership, all of you. You do the work day in and day out. You are outstanding planners, worker bees, leaders. You've been, three of you have been in the district as teachers, as administrators. My concern was that we have grounded, known people that our teachers and administrators will trust. Mr. Sol, and she just came on. But the other three are homegrown. And and we know you, and we know you do the work. We know you deliver. We know that you are outstanding, period. And like Ms. Medina said, it's an opportunity to have collective leadership in the meantime. And like Mr. Tillman said, you know, we're gonna move fast to start the superintendent search. And because three of us will be up for reelection, it's not fair that we choose a superintendent. It has to be the the new Board, and if we're duly elected, that will be part of it. If we're not, it'll be the new Board that selects, along with the community. The community, parents, every, all the stakeholders, parents, community, teachers, administrators have to come forth. I know from research that, like Mr. Tillman said, teaching and learning happens in the classroom. But it's also the site leadership. It's also the principals. And I have great, great trust in our principals. And I know that they love our our kids, our parents, our district. And, you know, it's in the meantime, right? This is for the meantime, and we'll see how it goes. And I just have full confidence in you guys, period. Throughout the, you know, the pandemic, you showed up. You did the work. You did the heavy lifting. I mean, it wasn't easy for anybody at all, but we we made it through. We survived, and now we have these opportunities to go and do what we do. All of you know how to plan. You know how to do things. You know how to coordinate. You know how to, you know, work with your teams. We just had evidence of it right now in terms of a new a new endeavor. And so that didn't happen overnight. That, I mean, and it it takes the the groundwork, the the people in the, you know, not just in the trenches, but who know our our families, who know policy, who know how to implement, who know how to plan, who know all the different, how to coordinate. And and just like today, you do it time and time and time again, whatever i- is called. And so, you know, we trust you. We trust you impeccably to to do the the hard lift. And like I said, in the meantime, the Aborigines say, in the meantime, you know? And this is a meantime. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and, you know, I've learned, listened to each of you very carefully. And, you know, the these last couple of years have been very challenging, have been very difficult. The most challenging couple of years in history that I think any of us will ever experience in our lifetime and many generations as well. So to have a little bit of anxiety, I think, is normal. That's for darn sure. So, Ms. Abios, I would say, yeah, even I am anxious a little bit. Change is always difficult, but with, there's a saying by Dr. Larry Zott, with great change comes, you know, great challenge and great responsibility as well. So we do have a plan of action, ready to go, and we do have a timeline, ready to go. You you heard a number of us say it already, you know, our goal is to put the search process immediately in place and to have us ready to interview in January, right after the elections, again, for the reasons that we've stated. So there there is a plan of action in place. I will also say this, you know, we had our institute last week, and we talked about leadership matters. And it truly does matter. And this district, you you heard some of my colleagues say that many of our assistant superintendents and deputy superintendents have left to go on to superintendent jobs or deputy jobs. And that's because this district does require a lot, and it requires a lot of talent on our Executive Cabinet, and we have that. We have that right now. And so that leads me to talk about trust as well, you know? And and I've heard some of my colleagues say that. We do trust you. If we didn't trust you, we definitely wouldn't have made this plan. We wouldn't have said, no, that's not a good idea. But but we do trust you. We we've seen what you have done in these last couple of years through the greatest adversity we could ever, ever imagine. And you guys have have met that challenge head-on, head-on. I mean, and and we've prevailed. We've survived. And actually, we have even grown in many different ways. And when we talk about leadership matters, that's why we have systems in place. I was talking to Dr. Manades on her last day here when I met with her, and I said, you know, the reason why we trust this is because we do have systems in place, systems of excellence, you know, where we've had an assistant soup lead, we've had a superintendent retire, we had a deputy superintendent move on. And I say, you know what? I know we have outstanding folks ready to fill those spots if necessary because we have systems in place, systems of excellence. And how we train our staff here, and I've seen the best training in this district and many of the districts that I've worked for or work in, it's second to none. I also don't let the disruptions or distractions, you know, pull you away from what's most important. As I heard, the teaching out there in the trenches is really what happens. The leadership out in the trenches is what happens and what matters. We saw that during our graduation celebrations. The excitement that I haven't seen in a couple of years was just phenomenal. I was talking to a parent about it this morning just by chance. Said, oh, yeah, my son graduated from Cajon this year. I didn't know it was a parent from one of our students. I said, really? What'd you think? He goes, oh, it was an amazing celebration, amazing graduation. That came from a parent, a very proud parent, I will say, one of our students who will be going to Cal State San Bernardino. So system's in place. And then one thing that was taught, especially, especially in a position this important, is that you do not hire fast. If anything, you hire slow. You take your time to make sure we get the You take your time to make sure we get the right person for the job. And we're going to do that. And I believe it was Mr. Tillman that said, you know, we are going to, once again, get community input, stakeholder input, to ensure that we make the right decision moving forward. So I am really motivated going into next year. A little bit of anxiety always, just because I work in education and a new year with a new leadership is going to be an interesting change. But I tell you, my optimism is at the highest level. I really am looking forward to next year. I'm looking forward to getting back into full gear coming out of this last year. I'm looking forward to it. And I am very motivated. I'm motivated with this board as well to work together and come together with coherence and then lead this district with our executive cabinet until we do find our new next superintendent. So I do appreciate all your input, though, and I do appreciate the communication we've had together to get to this point because it has been a challenge. But I know together, we will meet that challenge. So I'm asking for consensus of the rotation plan. If there is no further discussion, and I hopefully, that is something we agree to.
I support it. I support it as well, again, hopefully with the intent to hire an interim.
Ms. Viles, I know, I hear you. And I know that was discussed that if this does not work, that this board will immediately, immediately act and hire an interim if necessary. We will do that if we see any kind of issues with this rotation. So thank you for bringing that up as well. Dr. Rogers, you didn't say anything. I just want to make sure.
I said what I said before. But I agree with Ms. Viles. That's exactly where we need to be and all of the words. And even though sometimes we all don't echo the same thing over and over again, but I think it's clear, and I'll say it to be clear, that I appreciate the team and the work that everyone has done in this district. That is important to know. But we are in a position that we, there's broader and long-term things that we have to look at, that it should not ever be perceived as personal, but is what we're required to do. And so I am in support. And I look forward to us, you know, making sure that we're monitoring and doing what we need to do. But it's very important that people know that we are the Board of Education and we don't work inside this great district. We don't go to campuses and sign in and do roll call and do all those things. We're the governance board to support that foundation because many of us that sit up here have day jobs. So our job is to support. So I never want to blur those two lines. That's who we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. And as always, great input. But I will say this, we do visit campuses quite frequently. Might not be during the day, but definitely for school events and other things. I mean, it's always great to see our staff, students at their sites. So thank you, board members, for the discussion. And thank you, staff, for also putting together the rotation calendar and plan. All right, we'll move on to nine point, oh, wait, excuse me. Ms. Cunningham, you're going to.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you know what? You did pass me a note. And I wrote a note to myself, but I turned the page, which was a mistake. I live by this thing. All right. Actually, we missed a taking action on, I do apologize, on seven point two. So let me go right back up to that. We did have discussion and it said that we didn't, Karen said we didn't, Ms. Cunningham, she even said we didn't vote on seven point two. So I want to make sure that we do that. And I'll go ahead and read it. Be it for the resolve that the building fund, measure T and measure N, financial and performance audits, audits report for fiscal year 2020 and through 2021 as prepared by E.D. Bailey, L.L.P., be accepted as submitted.
Beckett. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion on seven point two? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
It go through? Was it six oh? All right, six oh, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for that friendly reminder and keeping us on point. All righty, we will move on to eight point two, board top 10. And folks, you should have got a handout from Ms. Cunningham that shows our responses on the 24 items that we identified as a board as priority items for us that looking forward to our future. So we were to identify our top 10 out of those 24. Somebody's had some overlaps, I'll say that. And so there were, there was one, let me say that, that drew our full attention, which was nice because it was the only one that got six out of six. And that was number one, which, you know, I'll just read it to the public, was implement wellness centers at all high schools, funding wellness centers at every high school and middle school wellness center, mental health centers at all high schools and wellness team district wide. So I think those were a couple of them combined. But it showed that we did have a huge common concern for that and that that was our number one priority. So I think that is a clear number one for us. We have, within the top 11, four others that received four or more votes from us as board members, which was number five, we had four out of six. Number eight, we had four out of six. Number 10, we had four out of six. Number 11, we had five out of six.
Which one of those are the lowest? That'd give the ranking for those ones with the four votes.
Yeah, but they just at least had responses. I'm just looking right now at number of responses selected by the board.
So I'm thinking for the ones that have the four responses, those are going to be your next group of top priority.
Okay, and that's what I was getting to, Mr. Tillman. No, that's okay. You right on the money, Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman. And then, so we had literally one, two, three, four, five that had four or more responses.
So any, so those that had five, we're going to jump to the ones that had four, not a five?
Well, when we look at the rest, the ones that are in gray, the rest of them, actually, we had another one at the bottom that had four out of six, too. I apologize, that was middle school gyms. And then when we look at the rest of the gray ones, which had the most responses, they're three out of six.
Well, I'm just looking at 11 and thinking that's five, too. And I'm just trying to figure out how you are ranking that. Because we did have five responses. And forget about the numbers, how they were ranked.
Have to put a number tall.
That's what I'm saying. So are you looking at five? If five responses?
I was looking at really the majority of the board kind of responding and selecting.
So then you would go six, five, four.
Six, five, four.
I was thinking that the five, the numbers in the five are high, though.
They are high, but we did have five that picked that in their top 10.
Right, so which formula is the method that we're?
So I was actually looking at, you know, out of these 23, how many of the responses that we as a board picked in our top 10? So as you can see, number one, that was overwhelmingly unanimous. And then when we go to number 11, five out of six of us said that was in our top 10. Might not have been our number two, three, or four, five. Yeah, that'd be number two. And then beyond that, we have, let me see, one, two, three, four to have four out of six.
So let's do those four.
So I would recommend those. And so that gets us to six. Now, the hard part would be seven through 10 would be what I would say.
But couldn't we, sorry, couldn't we quantify it? So anything that got a one, we can add 10 points to it?
We would, actually. You're absolutely right, Ms. Viles.
Anything that got a nine, two, we could do nine, three, eight and so forth. That way, we can rank them by categories.
Let me look while you're saying that. So actually, only one of the threes had a 10, and that was number three. Do you see that?
Make a suggestion?
Yeah, but Ms. Viles was speaking first, so thank you.
I know, that was just my recommendation. Maybe we quantify it in such a way where we tally up the whole, what each category got in total, and then we rank them up like that.
Mr. Tillman, your comment?
If you know, you know you had one and two, and then the other one with the four votes, you just take those with the lowest number being the next priority. So that'd be three through, you said, how many do we have? Seven?
We have six right now. And then so we need four more.
Then how about we secure those and then send the list back out?
Sure.
With these other.
And then finalize those last four?
Right, and then we do the last four.
It's a recommendation, but let's see what the board says.
And then the other one is, you know, the formula, the method you guys were using start out will get you to 11.
Yeah, right. It could get us to 11.
It'll get you to 11. I don't know what they are because I didn't look at them. I just started tallying and saying, okay, there was, there was a three. So that was number three, four, five, and you'll get 11.
What are they? You were looking for one through 10?
Oh, I think 12.
No, there's a little bit more than that.
What's number three?
Well, I just went and put number five as three. I just, because I was looking at three.
Let's just finish it. That's three. What's number four?
Four would be financial literacy.
Yeah, financial literacy.
What number is that?
That's number eight.
So number eight's number four?
Number five would be number 10. And then actually, number six would be 22. And then that would leave us three, six, seven, nine, 18, 21, and 23.
Which ones have three responses?
All of those.
Eighteen, yeah, it's 12. I think it's a total of 12.
So which one's the lowest number?
The lowest number next would be three.
Okay, so that's number seven?
Three, seven.
Seven is number eight?
Three, seven, six.
Six is number nine.
And then, let me see here.
It's going to be number nine, grading policies?
Actually, nine would be in there. Yeah, you're right.
That's number 10.
Two, 23.
That's your top 10.
Yeah, so help me out again on those, folks.
One is number one.
Yep.
Two is number 11.
Yep.
Five is number three.
Correct.
Eight's number four.
Yes.
10 is number five.
Correct. 22.
Did I leave out six?
22 is number six.
Right, 22 is number six. Number three is number seven.
Number three's number seven, okay.
And number seven's number eight.
Eight.
Number six is number nine. And number nine is number 10.
Wow, good job.
But here's the question, is this ranked already? No, right? You just went in order, is what you did.
Well, no, Ms. Cunningham kind of gathered these all, I believe.
That's what I'm saying. This, even though we went in that order to try to go to three, but this, this is not a ranked sheet.
No, not at this time. It would be now.
But you ranked it, but you did it according to what the order that they were in, right?
No, no, not at all.
We did it based on the weight.
Number one, number two is all the way down at 11.
Right.
That's what I'm asking you. Is this weighted already? How can you say number two is number 11?
Oh, it's weighted by our responses.
Right.
I know.
But did you, I heard you talk about number 22 because it had four responses. Is that why you did that? And then we ended with, there were some, so we never got to the ones with threes in them? Those were all fours? No. You started talking about ones that had three, right?
Correct.
Good, and the lowest number of threes.
So you went in order and 21, did 21 make the list because it has three?
No.
That's what I'm asking.
Because look at number seven. It had three, but it's a 10.
Four, five, one, yeah.
You told me to look at what?
Number three, which, number three, which we had a four, five, and one, which are low scores, which are really high scores.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is you included the score as well.
Exactly, yeah, because the number one, for example.
Because remember, we said in the beginning, the lower the number, the higher the priority.
Let me just add to, while we're in the mix of that, I think 23 goes into one, honestly.
Well, it could, absolutely.
Well, I'm just trying to fix this up because 23, talking about gardens, and that's all wellness, so that needs to be in there.
Yeah, we could add that. So add 23 to number one.
Get the number, Ms. Cunningham?
Well, let's, I think.
Did you get the number?
I want to let Dr. Rogers finish.
I just want, I saw that before we moved on.
That definitely be.
But I'm looking at numbers and now I'm trying to.
And that helps bring it up into the list. Yeah, no, that's great.
Okay, may I clarify? Are we moving 23 up with number one?
Correct.
Okay, we didn't do it originally because it wasn't centers, it was gardens. That's why we kept them separate.
That'd be part of the program, absolutely. So let's include 23 in the number one, which really does hit that hard. I appreciate that. So are we in consensus agreement then?
We are.
We have one through 10 or?
We do. I just want to say, and maybe I'm off base, but I think as a board, we left out chronic absenteeism.
I know, yeah.
Nah, to me, that's huge. So.
No, 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 no different than, I think, our cyber, but is that ongoing? Cyber, to look at that?
Chronic absenteeism's ongoing.
Right, no, but I'm saying there's some things like that. How do we, is that going to be ongoing just because we didn't say it?
Well, the thing I was thinking, if we had a program that we knew addressed chronic absenteeism, and we don't right now, so that's why I thought maybe we just make it 11. But it's not on the list. But I thought to myself, I know we all feel the same way about chronic absenteeism. So it was a huge oversight for us to do it at all, but.
We could add that to 25. And what I would add to this is that, remember, just because these other items didn't make our top 10, they go on a secondary list. Remember, we talked about that before? And I forgot what that list was called, but Karen brought it for us last time.
Yeah, because I'm not going to stop about the gymnasiums. I just want you guys to know.
I think you made it on the gymnasiums, didn't you?
No, I don't think it made it, but is that in, did it make it in?
It's top 10.
Okay, because that's in facilities.
So let me just go over the numbers again. Number one is number one.
Number one is number one.
Number 11 is number two. Number five is number three. Number eight is number four. Number 10 is number five. Number 22 is number six. Number three is number seven. Number seven is number.
Hey, what was that one you just said? Number seven?
Number three.
Three is seven.
Is number seven. Number seven is number eight. Number six is number nine. And number nine is number 10. And we asked for a top 10 list, I wish we'd just moved forward.
And I think it's a great list, but again, I do want to emphasize that those other ideas are not gone. Okay, and I think that was a concern before is that those things were gone. And we did have some lights on. So, Dr. Flores.
Yeah, I, I'm the one that put number, the one on audit and upgrade our district cybersecurity system. I think the cabinet, who's in charge of that?
Twenty, number twenty.
Mr. Sullivan, I think you do that naturally because you're on it and it's just a FYI, flag, red flag, because we need to make sure that we're secure. I mean, it's not, shouldn't be a priority. I just put it in there, but I know that you monitor that and, right? Because we don't want to be, we'd want to be attacked again.
Correct.
Or hacked, right? So you're on it, right? Yeah, okay. It's real important.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Another idea, of course, we're going to work on the top 10, but it's also, we have to have a separate sheet that has to do just with the key performance indicators that we are receiving updates with. And that can include the chronic absenteeism, just to make sure that we're on the right track. Right, and so, and this would be top priorities with everything else. And so I think, I don't want to lose sight that we should, if we haven't already created it. if we haven't already created it, I know we used to have, maybe it's revisiting what were our KPIs back then, and bring it forward so we can start analyzing that, just making sure that's part of the, um, the accountability piece. And, uh, so I think this with that can go hand in hand.
Absolutely, Ms. Rosales Medina, and then Ms. Sabios.
Okay, and then me, okay.
Ms. Sabios.
So, um, so I'm not entirely sure how we went about selecting, um, the top 10 here, I, I heard that you said that whichever ones had four responses, but I quantified them, just like I, like I said, um, like, like I suggested. So if we were to take number one, for example, there's four ones, and if I give those ones a 10, and then the two, I give a nine, and the three, I give an eight, that gives me a total of 57. Then number two, it gives me a total of 16, 23, 17, 27, 16, and so forth. There's, for instance, four and 10, they don't have, one of them has two responses and the other one has four, but quantitative, quantitatively speaking, they both equal a 17 as far as points go, if we were to-
But it's obvious, if you didn't get a vote, it wasn't a priority.
Okay, so I guess that's what I was asking, in terms of, so which one are we fault, are we just going based off of? Because, because even then, if it has votes, like five votes, okay, it's obvious that number one's number one, but then if you go down, and let's say there's one that has four votes, and there's another one that has four votes, and we need to differentiate by quantity, did we do, did we do that? Okay, so.
So the one with four votes, we put them in order by whatever was the lesser number.
Which would've been a higher score.
That was the higher priority.
Yeah.
Because we said the smaller the number, the higher the priority. So if you had four votes, it's easy to say, for instance, number five, if you added this three, four, 10, which gives you 14, 17, which is lower than number four, which gives you 12, and 12, which is 24.
Okay, so, so, got it, you went based off of whichever one got the most votes, and then those you automatically boosted up, and then the ones that had less number of votes, you, you added those up. Got it.
Yeah, just like you said, Ms. Sabios. All right, Dr. Flores?
I wanted to ask Mrs. Applegate, um, for our KPIs, is she here? Or she left?
She stepped out.
Oh, she stepped out, okay, sorry.
Well, what I would ask is, um, and Ms. Cunningham did have this last time, so I apologize, is that she did bring the other hand out with us, but I didn't wanna confuse us even more, so, you know, that secondary sheet, Ms. Cunningham, that had the, um, ones that did make the top 10, that we were monitoring, I forgot the name of the list, but you made copies of it last time, but we didn't hand them out. I just recommend you, you share those, maybe we could send those to the board, um, you know, or Ms., uh, Contran can send those out, so they could see what we're talking about. Yes, the initiatives. So they know that these other items will be initiatives, they just haven't made the top 10, they won't disappear, but they'll be on our initiative list that we monitor, and we know who it's assigned to as well, in regards to the cabinet, um, member leading the initiatives.
Dr. Wyatt, I really wanted to follow up with what Ms. Medina said.
Okay.
About the KPIs, because chronic absenteeism is in there.
It's all on there.
So it's all on there, so we are going to be, um, uh, monitoring that and so forth. Ms., Mrs. Applegate, I didn't know that you stepped out, but I just wanted you to confirm that in the KPIs, we have chronic absenteeism as one of the, right, uh, KPIs, and that we do continuously monitor it and all of that, right? And, and are you in charge of that? No? Who is in charge of that?
Dr. Rodriguez.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Oh, Dr. Rodriguez, okay, thank you.
All right, board, thank you for your, um, your input and discussion. That, that was really good for us to go through the process and narrow that down to the top 10. We'll move on to 9.0, reports and comments, um, we'll start with board members, and it will be, we'll start today with, uh, Ms. Rosales Medina, and I will remind us, we have five minutes, please.
I just wanted to wish, um, everyone, I know we celebrated it yesterday as a national holiday, the Juneteenth, and I'm really excited and look forward, the district also using that as a paid holiday within our school district, um, and just wanted to wish everyone well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, so we'll move from, uh, right to left, it'll be Dr. Flores.
Um, thank you, uh, and I also hope that we establish a paid holiday, uh, Juneteenth, that would be great. It's really important, um, that we do that as a district, and I just wanted to say that, um, I'm gonna be going to a couple of conferences, to the Dual Language Immersion Conference in Newport, for a couple of days, and then I'm gonna head, um, north, uh, to the California Association of Latino School Board Association, and I wanna brag, because our district is well represented. There were a hundred, um, proposals, only 40 got, uh, uh, accepted, and, uh, Michelle Cleveland and Susan Kydell, uh, from our district got accepted. Uh, Bernardo Valenzuela from Arroyo got accepted, and it's called Wall-to-Wall Journey. Tamika Casey and Shannon Penrose Mado also got accepted, and yours truly got accepted, uh, to present, so we're well represented in terms of our, our breath and depth, in terms of knowledge. Um, I think we're gonna be well represented, so, anyway, just wanted to share, thank you.
It's great news, Dr. Flores, 10%, 10%, we have 10%.
At the risk of getting Dr. Flores started, what is the, what is the title of your presentation?
I didn't have the timer on, but as I say, she still has some time left.
The title of the presentation, and I'm doing it with, uh, Dr. Noni Mendoza Reese. Uh, we did a, uh, research study on principals, and it's called Changing the Pedagogical Nature of Schools with English Learners: Reculturing Instructional Leadership.
Very much, sounds impressive. Uh, I do, I do want to read an announcement, I was called by a past board member, in case you don't know her, her name is, uh, Ms. Judy Pimmin, she can be very forceful. She's with the Chamber of Commerce, and they're having a Law Enforcement Day, um, event on Thursday, June 30th, at 6 o'clock, and we have an award winner in our district, it is Corporal Daniel Martinez. So-
And it's at the Elks.
It's at the Elks?
And she told me be there at 5:30.
Right, so I guess you should get a list, Ms. Cunningham, about, some-
A table.
There you go, perfect, perfect, all right. And, um, and that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, and yes, Ms. Cunningham, if we can, uh, you know, put out an announcement, so we can find out which board members will be attending, because I'm sure that one will be well attended, actually, I do apologize, I'm thinking about my itinerary, and I will be flying back from DC, so I will not be able to attend, but I will definitely be in a spirit, as Chief knows, I usually go every year, and if I wasn't in DC, I'd be there. All right, Ms. Sabios.
Thank you so much, um, just kinda to piggy off, uh, back, uh, what has been said about, uh, Juneteenth, um, happy Juneteenth Day. Also, happy Father's Day to our, our dads out there, um, I know it's also passed, but I wanted to take the opportunity and say that as well. Um, I also wanted to, um, say that, um, I attended the Administrative Leadership Institute, um, for one of the days, uh, I think it was on Tuesday, and I was just really excited to see, um, you know, some of the work that, um, you all are doing. I, again, um, also have full confidence. Please don't misinterpret my words, um, I have full confidence. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, for acknowledging my anxieties, that's normal, because they are. Um, I do have anxieties, and I like to share those with you all, because it is part of my humanity. But I do have full confidence, and, and, um, my anxieties mainly revolve around long-term, um, progress of the district, right? Their long-term goals, not that, um, I don't think that you guys are all capable of, you know, moving the work, uh, work forward for however long we have you, um, on this rotating plan. Um, but other than that, just thank you so much for everything that you do. Um, hope that you all can get some time off during the summer, because as you've already seen, you, you have a lot of work ahead of you. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, Dr. Dettie Rogers.
Thank you, and I'll, I'll lead off with the note of the Juneteenth, I had an opportunity to attend like three events, there was a fourth one, but I didn't make it. But I wanna thank the district, because the dish, the first one I started off with was, um, each one I did remarks, and the, they had requested material, and the district put together a gray pamphlet on our Sankofa program, so I was able to take those to the multiple, um, events and pass those out, and people really were happy and responsive about it, and just to see it, that's a program that we've had since 2005, and it's been revamped, and there's an actual flyer, and so many of our community members and parents were definitely, um, excited to see that, as well as mentioning, um, what, uh, Dr. Flores and I brought back to the attention. I know that when we even passed the resolution and then moved forward, the next year now, it's being a federal holiday, and then seeing where many people were, some were off, some were not, but it's good to know. You know, it was very important for us to mention that we would like to see that done in our district as well, because we were taking some shots here and there, where people didn't understand what was going on, but I am fully confident that we will move forward and get that done. Um, also, yes, um, thank you, Mr. Tillman, because I believe Judy Pimmin called each of us, or she even made sure she left a message and a text. So we got it, and, and, and we will check our schedules, and hopefully be, will be there as well. So I was happy about that, I do also wanna add again, when I, when I looked at, even in our top 10 work, where things are buried, but we're gonna get to an action item, and it's gonna talk about grading policies, and I just, that zero, if it's still looming, is just really a problem, so I'll, I'll, I'll save and ask that question down the line. So those are, those are the good things, but the, there's other things that I do wanna mention, and, and the KPIs, I am, whatever we wanna call them, again, it's, we want progress, information about the things that we've identified are the important goals, whatever those may be. And then on the disappointing side, there's a couple of things I'm a little disappointed about. Um, the other week, I did mention, um, that there is the AB 2774, number one, that is the L cap revisiting the African-American students, and we have got to get back to the point where we do these letters of support, we have local leaders that we talk to about everything, or they come and talk to us about everything, and when those type of things come up, we have to be on the forefront, because they do take our calls, and we take theirs as well. But this is an opportunity to really increase some funding for, um, our underserved population. Secondly, as we spoke tonight, AB 2933 is again, um, the mandate on the transportation movement of what we need to do. Often, we will sit and try to figure out what we can do with the funding that we do get, but here again, a letter of support is needed on both of those, and we need to be at the forefront to say, we want our elected local legislators to push forward on that. So we, you know, I wanna tell you that again, and then, lastly, I, one day, I hope to retire, I really do, because I do a lot, but they always tell you, like they told, like we told the individuals that came here, you're too young to retire. Well, I guess that's a compliment, but I certainly would like to do it, so I'm gonna see what we can do. But I would hope the day that I do retire, because I've, I've had the pleasure of retire, or, or, of attending many retirement parties, uh, celebrations, cookies, donuts, whatever you wanna call it, for the, the work that individuals do. And it says something, and I know this district, we have been better about these type of things, but I'm saddened that the superintendent, regardless of everything, and I certainly don't wanna get on a negative note, but to have nothing in place, or even directed by this board, and I did have mentioned this, I, 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 I just don't, I, I'm speechless to say that, because we can, and we've always done in the past, send people off with an appreciation, and, and to not do that is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Has nothing to do with him not being here, and I know you, but, because we knew, we've known long enough, and I mentioned it far in advance, that I could've purchased a cake if we weren't gonna do anything. Whether you eat it or not, it's the thought that counts.
That actually rolls over into my comments, Dr. Rogers, because, um, I did, my first thing I wanted to talk about was thanking Doc Ervin, our superintendent for, you know, um, coming to our district, number one, we knew it would be a challenge coming here, and, uh, regardless of if it was the right fit or not, he definitely identified a number of key areas that we need to work on in regards to, you know, our plan of excellence, so I appreciate him coming to our district, you know, on a challenge, and, uh, you know, taking a chance on us, and, um, helping us identify areas we need to improve in, and I just wanna know, he's appreciated for, you know, coming here, and, and bringing to a lot to our district in a very short period of time, along with Dr. Ricardo Iscovell, and, um, and I did ask staff about honoring him, and it was, um, said that, you know, he did not wanna have that, but I agree with you, Dr. Rogers, we, we will celebrate him. I know a number of us just not here, and he's not here right now, and like I told him, I wish he was, but he is with family right now. Got to attend a, a really nice promotion ceremony, and I know Dr. Rogers was there, as well as, uh, Vice President Tillman for one of our, our charter schools, Savant Prep, and it was their kindergarten promotion, and one, I appreciate the invitation, two, their, um, promotion ceremony, and, and I just wanna compliment them on it, on an amazing job well done. Um, it was a class act, there was a tremendous amount of energy and celebration there for the kids, um, and I will say, I said this, and I said this to, um, the folks over there, it, they really set the bar, um, for a kindergarten promotion. I was like, wow, that, that was a, a lot of fun, I'll say that, and, and the kids and the staff did an amazing job. We'll also say, uh, congratulations to our, our new San Diego City Police Chief, if you didn't know, we, we have a new police chief, Mr., uh, Chief Darren Goodman, who came to us from Upland PD, he was the chief there, he also lived that one time in our city, I don't think a lot of people probably knew that, but he lived in our city. And one of the great fires burned his home down before he moved, and so he also worked here in our city, uh, with the Sheriff's Department, so he has a long tradition and history in our city, so great to have somebody that, uh, used to live here, and also is very familiar with our city. Also wanna say thank you to Chief Polino, um, and our San Diego City Unified School District School Police for doing a, an outstanding job again, but more so this year, um, there was a, talk about anxiety, Ms. Sabios, um, our graduation cerem- ceremony for county schools, we bring students and families from all over the county into one graduation ceremony. So if you know about, you know, the families and students I work with, you know, that, um, that creates a lot of anxiety with our staff, uh, especially with what has happened recently in regards to violence, and school violence, and, uh, the chief and our, our school police team did an amazing job, ensuring we had a very, very safe graduation ceremony for our, our students, which we had approximately 165 students graduate from our program, so I wanna say thank you to, to chief, as well as his staff, for ensuring our, our students, our staff, and our, our families were safe, and it, it was by far one of our best graduation ceremonies ever, and, um, one of our safest, too, so. Uh, and then, you know, I, I do apologize, I wanted to get out on Saturday for the Juneteenth celebrations, I got to celebrate through a number of you, um, virtually. Uh, I spent my whole weekend at home, um, taking care of my wife, who was very, very ill, uh, and recovering, but, uh, that was my weekend, so. I was looking forward to getting out and, and seeing those Juneteenth celebrations, and I appreciate our district staff that were out there as well, uh, celebrating this great holiday for our country, and that is my comments. Dr. Flores, you're gonna, you know, I'm gonna put a check mark, red check mark on you today.
I forgot to mention, uh, the 40th anniversary of Plyler versus Doe, that was a Supreme Court case that gave, uh, undocumented, um, children the right to an education, and we're in the 40th, uh, year of celebration. And I just wanted to confirm, our next board meeting is July 19th?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All righty, uh, 9.2 Superintendent Staff, and, um, that will be Mr. Solon right now, and then other staff if needed.
In the spirit of collaboration, I was mentioned during the Administrator in Charge Rotation Conversation, I've conferred with my colleagues, and we have no comments this evening.
Well, thank you for moving it right along, okay, and we'll try to keep it moving. Um, 10.0 Action Items, 10.1 Approval Personnel Report Number 23, dated June 21st, 2022, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations. As President, so moved? It's been moved and properly seconded, um, any discussion? All right, let's vote.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Uh, it's Dr. Flores.
Dr. Rogers, did yours not come up?
Oh, just did, hold on.
All right, motion carries, 10.2 Adoption of 2022-2023 Local Control and Accountability Plan and Federal Addendum.
So moved.
Again.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to commend, uh, Mrs. Applegate and the whole team for your, um, incredible, I read every bit, I read everything. It was a lot, and, uh, it's very comprehensive, uh, local control, so kudos to all of your team.
Thank you, and I know Ms. Sergeant, and Ms. Huey is out here, the, the fiscal team is out here as well, thank you, it was a total team effort.
Ooh, great job. That is a lot. All right, thank you very much, Dr. Flores, and yes, thank you to staff for amazing L cap report. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries, move on to 10.3 Adoption of Fiscal Year, uh, 2022 through 2023 Budget.
So moved.
Again.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion?
President Wyatt?
Uh, Doc, uh, Vice President Tillman, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanna state this, um, it's just amazing to see that the total revenues are $993 million. I can remember coming to the board, and the budget was $200 million, and for more students. I know it's inflation, but it is a lot of extra funding, and it truly is amazing, and, uh, I don't think we should take it for granted, and continue using money the right way to enhance the education for our students, and meet our students where they are. This kind of money can help us mitigate a lot of the circumstance they have to deal with, so I just hope we keep- So I just hope we keep that in mind when we move forward on expanding these revenues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. I couldn't agree more. Any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, which I see it's up there. Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Okay, motion carries, move on to 10.4 Approval of School Plans for Student Achievement.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion about our CIPSAs?
I just wanted to say, I mean, it's, it's a big lift for everybody to do their plans. And I know that it takes the whole, the whole school and committees and so forth. Just want to show appreciation for their planning ahead, and for, you know, being thoughtful in how they're going to budget their money.
Couldn't agree more, and that is true, the essence of local control. So thank you, Dr. Flores. And if there's any other discussion, if not, let's vote. Not yet, Ms. Cunningham, it has, it has not. Do we need to do a verbal? Okay.
Okay, there it is.
Oh, okay, there we go. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to 10.5 Resolution for Adopting Notices of Exemption for Construction Projects at Various Sites Throughout the District, and Authorizing Staff to File Notice of Exemption for Each Site with the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors and the State Clearing House within the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and Compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act for Business Services.
Moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries, we'll move on to 10.6 Resolution Ordering School District Election for Governing Board Members, Whose Terms Expire December 9, 2022.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, we will, all right, motion carries, we will move on to 11.0 Consent Items. We do have a public comment on five of our consent items, so we'll go ahead with public comment first, and we will call Ms. Negretti. Welcome, Ms. Negretti, and thank you for being patient. She will be stating which items. Or did you want me to state them, Ms. Negretti? Are you?
I can state them.
All right, and then you'll have five minutes, please.
And this was regarding, no, go ahead and state them, because.
Okay. All right, she wanted to discuss 11.33, 11.36, 11.55, 11.56, and 11.57.
Regarding 11.33, I have a question, and, and so I would like for that to be addressed, included in there. I want to know if the $5 million, well, almost $6 million, is this going to be out of the ESTER funds? And does it have a certain date that they must be spent on? Because I see that that's a very large amount, or is it coming out of the general, general funding? And so when you start, depending on where that's coming from, too, I would like to know if you are including all students when it comes to this, and both sides? Because if this has something to do with just ESTER funds, right, we had asked for balanced decisions and well-rounded, informed policies and information as far as presentations, not just one-sided. Because two years ago, you didn't know that there were adverse reactions, and now you know that there are adverse reactions regarding this. And so if we're using taxpayers' fundings, whether it's for ESTER funding or not, it should be inclusive of everything, the negative and the positive. Regarding the following agenda items, I want to know if what's being done to ensure that fairness and inclusiveness is leading the decisions and contracts and policies? And this has to do with, you know, 1158? Because it's still taxpayer funding, right? So what are we doing when you start to make decisions with such items? And that has to do with, you know, you have a contract for $98,776. There's additional contracts, too. So can we make sure that it's balanced, that it's not just one-sided? Because you represent a district that is predominantly Hispanic. And so when we're spending this amount of taxpayers' money, we can't continue to create that divide. And this is something that I believe Del Marston felt a lot, because I saw a lot of pushing back and forward between certain of our, certain groups that we have that represent the parents. And so I just don't see the need for that. And I also want to know, when it comes back, going back to 11.33, right, I see that Eric Beter presented, you know, was the one who prepared this. Is he the one who is qualified? Because when I see the different names of who is preparing this for the Board, we have assistant superintendents. Whether I'm confident enough that, or not, that they can make these decisions, I see that you're having other people now prepare these reports. And regarding 8.2, since I didn't get to, you know, talk about that one either, are you looking, I really, I'm really concerned to see the rotation, because right now, whether you're aware of it or not, there are some decisions that Dr. Funches has created, has made, that are going to create an impact. Are you aware that some of your teachers have now filed grievances? Because he interpreted their contract in one way, and it wasn't, they weren't getting paid. You now also have school police, who is also coming after the district, because he interpreted the district, again, in his best view. And so am I confident that he would be one good person to put as a superintendent? No, and that's very concerning. So when I hear you say, you know, now you're in a position, you know, that you're in a position to make this decision because of what happened with our superintendent, well, it's not just you who you're placing in that position, you have now placed our students, because he was here to, for the best interest of the kids. So to see that you want to wait a year, and that you want to put someone who is already showing incompetence, you praise him over and over, but I don't know if you praise him over and over just based on limited information, or do you have the full view of what's happening? Because to me, that's lawsuits and lawsuits waiting to happen, but now you want to put him to lead this district, it's an absolute no for me. And I'm a parent, and I have kids here, so can we bring someone forward? And I can tell you right now, I would not want to see any of them assistant superintendents promoted to superintendent. So I hope that you're looking for someone who can bring fairness and balance, and can make decisions in the best interest of students and our organizations.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. And Mr. Solon, I know we normally don't reply to comments, but 11.33, that is a large contract of $6 million, so I didn't, you know, I don't know if you wanted to talk about how that is funded, and.
It is funded through the one-time ESTER funds.
That's what I thought, too. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Negretti. All right, let's move on back over to, excuse me, Dr. Flores, did you?
I want to pull a couple items.
Oh, okay, I will get that right now. 11.1 Approval Consent Items.
Moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Items to pull, and let me get my list ready. Dr. Flores, you said you had some items?
Yes, I would like to pull 11.6 and 11.60.
11.6 and 11.60.
11.50.
11, oh, sorry, 11.50.
Yes.
Any others?
I will pull 11.33.
11.33, and I need to point, pull, excuse me, point, I need to pull 11.38 and 11.76, which I will be recusing myself, since I am a paid employee for the San Diego County Superintendent Schools, so.
And I have a question on 11.53.
11.53, thank you. And I do apologize, let me put these in order now. Point six, point three, three, seven, point eight, oh, two, six. All righty, so we will start with 11.6, and that is.
Hold on, we want to vote on the rest.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I see lights on all over, so I just want to.
It's been moved and seconded already.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. We've had our discussion on items to be pulled, let's go ahead and vote, and the consent items, as it has been adjusted. All right, motion carries, we will start with 11.6 Amendment to the Agreement of School Innovative Innovations and Achievement. And who was that?
That was me.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Mr. Solons, the question I have is, for, if you bring it up, the contracts, goals, innovation, and achievement, it says 2019, July 16, 2019. And if you, at the beginning, and if you go down to the bottom of it, it says between July 19 and 6/30/20. Is that an error? Is it the wrong contract?
Sorry, which page are you referring to?
Page, let's see, page four of five.
Okay, yeah, so, so not a typo, so if you see on page, I'm trying to, I'm sorry, three of five, there is a table at the bottom. So it starts with year one, that extends to June 30. This is a service agreement. Service agreements have a five-year applicability. So what we're bringing to the Board is an amendment to extend for an additional year, the agreement.
Extend for an additional year?
Correct.
But you brought the original contract?
Correct.
Where does it say, extension?
It says years two and beyond.
Correct.
Oh, years two and beyond, okay. All right, so I didn't catch that, okay.
Yes, service, service contracts have applicability for up to five years, pending Board approval annually.
Okay, so it's still 2020, so we're in '22, 2022.
Correct. That's correct. So we have up until 2025 that this contract could be valid, but we're taking.
So this is just an extension for one year?
Correct.
And what would the money be? What, how much would it be?
So this is, this is the $30,300.
So it'd be an extension of $30,300 for one more year?
For one more year, yes.
Okay, all right.
And just to give the Board some context, this is a service that ensures that we are compliant with mandated cost reimbursement. So this is funding that we receive. So this helps make sure that we are in compliance with the requirements for that funding.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to 11.33, which is the one we just discussed, renewal of the agreement with Applied Memetics LLC DBA, amount of almost $6 million. Ms. Rosas Medina?
Yes, and so I pulled this item because of the amount of money, and I've had a concern with them, even from the first contract that we did. One, because of the amount of money, and second of all, is when we had it implemented, there was so many delays, so many issues. And now that, you know, incidences have decreased, I'm not sure exactly if it's gone back up, but it's nowhere near, at least from what I'm understanding, where it was a year ago. And so I think for the amount of money that even then we paid, for a lot of them just learning how to hire within our district, and recruit within our district, and testing and all that, it was just a lot of mess, that I wouldn't necessarily support this, but just wanted to make that statement, only because I know the last time I was really disappointed.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina, Ms. Sevales.
I actually also had some questions about this, only because I also thought, or was under the impression that our numbers were going down. And so I guess I, I'm interested in knowing and learning more on the current state that we are in, before we move forward with approving that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sevales, thank you very much. Dr. Flores?
I'm interested in knowing also the feasibility of investing this amount, and did we ever get an evaluation of their performance? It says, starting July 1, we will not have any kids in place. So I, I, Dr. Wyatt, I would like to request if we have any data regarding why we need to fully fund them again? Or do we, or do we partially fund them? Or, you know, what, what are the services? I couldn't really decipher all the services. And like what Ms. Negretti said, you know, is it equitable, or what actually are they going to be doing? So anyway, I would, I would like to know that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Vice President Tillman.
The number sounds substantial. You take $6 million divided by 72, that's only $83,000 per site. And I know, just working in the county, they send out notices to the offices where people have tested positive, and we're still getting substantial numbers. And when school starts back, you don't know where the numbers are going to go, whether they're going to be up or down. And there, it's not, the deaths aren't as bad as they were, but there's still a concern when people get tested positive for COVID. And this has been a resource that has allowed extra staff to facilitate the testing and notification, that if that extra staff had did that job, then you'd have our own teachers, and I guess recades and nurses that have to do that work. So to me, this has been a huge asset. Has it been perfect? No. But it was something that was brand new to everyone. And I really did see the value in having these additional resources at our site, and it was paid for out of the ESTER money, I'm sure. And a lot of this money is used or lose it. And I still think that, and I'm telling you, I just saw, I got eight emails a day, because I service multiple human services sites where people are testing positive. Parents want to know that, and we have tools built that do that. And you guys can not approve the contract, but when you don't have something to replace it with the next school year, and you have parents down here complaining because you didn't test your kid, you don't have facilities to test your kid, you don't have the resource and the people, then I think it'd be a whole lot worse off than continuing with this company. So I hope that we have the votes to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Thank you. And I, I agree with the accountability side that was brought up, but I, just for, you know, the public's sake as well, and maybe, Mr. Solons, you can clarify, specifically the dollars, and Mr. Tillman mentioned it, but these dollars, the ESTER dollars, were to do what?
To mitigate COVID and the impacts of COVID. And just a couple of comments, this is a scaled-back contract. This is a recognizing that we are in a different place as it relates to COVID. I would also like to point out, this is a not-to-exceed, that means we, if we do not require the services, we are not obligated to pay the full amount of the contract. So there, those are just a couple of that. So there, those are just a couple of that, but as it relates to, and I think, uh, Board, uh, Vice President Tillman mentioned as well, we are starting to see an uptick in, in COVID cases again, and so this is an important service, and, um, I, I, I would agree and concur that if we were to move closer to the school year without, um, any support or services like this, we would be ill-equipped to deal with any, any, any outbreak or increase in cases.
Thank you, Mr. Solins, and that's, that was the other thing I was going to point out, because it is not to exceed is on there, but more importantly, I agree with accountability, I mean, if there, if we have concerns, we should always be doing that, 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 we talk about that on a regular, whatever, you know, contractor, that accountability, if we feel that, that there are things that are not done, but I think it's important for us to, you know, let everyone know that this funding is coming from a place to do this work, and then it, then if it's in fact that they're not doing it properly, then we have to come with, you know, who else is out there in the industry, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers, and, um, you know, I'll try to make mine brief. Uh, Ms. Sol, you, you said it scaled back from before, do you know what we were at before, because we're almost at, I think, seven million right now?
Correct, for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, it was, uh, double, it was twelve million dollars.
It was double?
Correct.
So approximately fourteen million dollars?
No, twelve million.
Or twelve million, I'm sorry, let me look at that again. Okay, I'm sorry, it was six million, right, it's six million, so twelve million, alright, so we did scale that back, um, half, and then we only pay for what we utilize, and again, we need to make sure we monitor and audit the utilization of that. I, I agree with Mr. Tillman, um, you know, the organization I work with, we've seen three outbreaks at three different facilities, um, one which I work at, so I know that it is still prevalent out there, as we heard, maybe not as many deaths, but we definitely have a lot of positives coming back, and we just need to make sure we take, as we've said before, to ensure that we have a safe environment for our students and staff and families, so. Alrighty, I think, Dr. Flores, were you next, or Ms. Zos, Medina, it's one of you two?
I think Ms. Medina was.
I was, yeah, and so I just wanted to, um, kind of remind folks, when they came to present, they presented that many of the hires that was within that budget was gonna, um, cover them recruiting people, so it wasn't necessarily their own team that was going to be working with them, and they had some team, their, you know, team individuals, but they were going to recruit, so then what my question is, is with Eric Beter and his department, do we not have any of those that are within our local, that worked within our school district? Can we not hire them and do this more internally within our department versus having to hire them to hire people that live in our city? That, that's what they did the last time, does that make sense? So they recruited people that lived in their community because they didn't have that much, um, people power, so, um, I'm sure they, we have many trained individuals and that Eric can definitely work with, um, within our school district, instead of having to hire an agency that's just going to go back right and hire, um, people from our community. Oh, I mean, to me, that's, it's just, um, it doesn't make any sense, but I get what, I get, I get the understanding that with the possible increase, we need to be better prepared, we need to be, um, students are going to come back to school, but that's why we have a department with Eric Beter, so I'm hoping that he and his team, um, since they've worked so diligently, have people or have, um, a, a, uh, something in mind of what they're planning to do in case that arose, instead of hiring out.
Thank you, Ms. Zos, Medina, Dr. Flores.
I just want to thank you, Mr. Solins, for clarifying that, um, it's half the amount, and it is only for services rendered and, uh, and not the full amount. So, and, and we do need to have, uh, something in place, like Mr. Tillman said, so, um, clarified that for me, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Ms. Sivas.
So just really quickly, um, would it be, I think that accountability piece is, is really, I think, for me, the, the piece that's missing, I don't remember the last time that they came before us to kind of give us an update or a, a report on, on kind of what's going on, and as we have, you know, been moving away and out of COVID, more and more, you know, with, uh, um, lifting restrictions and things like that, I guess I'm just not really sure where we're at in terms of like protocols and procedures, are we still doing like the, you know, is that still required, like even, even for like staff, right? Is it, is it, I guess we need an update, I, I, I would need an update. And then the, the next part to that, um, just as a suggestion, could it be possible that maybe we, you know, can maybe postpone it to the next board meeting, and maybe at the next board meeting, they present to us something? You know, to where we can, because I also want to make sure that we have something in place.
I would support that.
But that would be before the start, I, I would say before the start of the actual school year, um.
Just, I, I didn't mean to cut you off, go finish.
No, 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 go ahead.
So just a couple points, um, we do plan on having students on campus for activities in July, so we would need to provide requisite services. The other piece is, in all fairness to any contractor that we deal with, they have to be able to staff, and to give them, uh, to take this to the board meeting in July with the expectation that they are going to be able to ramp up and provide the staffing, uh, within two weeks is, is not realistic for a provider. This is actually, um, I probably would estimate uncomfortable for them in trying to staff for the coming school year, just given the amount of time. So those are a couple concerns that we, we have to be cognizant of if we were to postpone this.
Okay, okay, well, thank you for clarifying that, just throwing some ideas out there.
Vice President Tillman.
Yeah, and I have no problem with hearing a presentation, I have no problem with, uh, Ms. Zos Medina exploring, um, having Eric Beter give a presentation on what it would take to, um, hire people, but I will say this, COVID is not going to be with us for a long time, we already, we saw we scaled back. It's a whole lot easier to scale back with a private company, you say you're going to end the contract, the contract's gone. If you take the same six million dollars with the people and hire them, then you can't, uh, end their contracts, I don't know what position you're going to put them in, but, um, I don't see how that would work, I mean, the, to me, this was a, a perfect expenditure for the asset money, we received extra money for mitigation purposes, no one is going away, which means that I don't know why you would hire full-time people and then, um, have to lay them off. We passed new laws that say you have to give even notice to classified employees, so to hire, that many classified employees, and then know that you're going to lay them off is a whole lot easier said than done, so to me, even if you're going to plan on hiring your own, you still would approve this contract, you say it's to, uh, only you're going to expend what you use, and somehow you come up with some, um, new, new process, and you hire the people, I'm not saying the board's going to do that, but in case you did, you could always eliminate it. But the worst case scenario, you're not going to stand up a program between now and August. The worst case scenario is not to have people in those sites, um, doing the testing, notifying the parents, notifying staff, those people are doing a lot of work, I know we hear about the negative, but I can tell you, there was a whole lot of positive being done, through this company and the services they provided, so I would hope that we continue using them now and approve this tonight. I was looking for four votes, so we can get it done, I hope we get the four votes, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, I hope there's no more further discussion, but a lot of clarification there, good questions. Alright, let's go ahead and vote.
Moved. Nope.
Second.
I apologize, so it's been moved and properly second by Mr. Tillman and Dr. Flores. Looks like no more further discussion, now we can vote, thank you. Alright, is that correct, motion carries five one, alright, so we will move on to, um, eleven point three eight, and I would also include eleven point seven six, uh, I will be, uh, recusing myself from those two items, since I am a paid employee by Samdun County Superintendent Schools, however, those programs are not under my supervision, I will say that, and I will remove myself from the room, thank you.
Eleven point three eight.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, vote please.
I did.
Thank you, eleven point seven six, renewal of agreement with Samdun County Superintendent Schools.
Second.
It's been moved in second, vote please. It was moved by Dr. Flores and second by Ms. Abigail Medina.
Thank you, Board, and I think we are on eleven point five zero.
I pulled that to abstain, my, uh, daughter works for Savant, so I'll go out and abstain.
Alrighty. And eleven point five zero was approval to MOU between Samdun City Unified School District and Certain Charter Schools for District Police Services, one which is Savant Prep.
So moved.
Alright, it's been moved.
Second.
And properly second by Dr. Dottie Rogers, any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries five zero with Mr. Tillman abstaining, we will move on to eleven point five three, renewal of the agreement with Creative Leadership Solutions, the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars.
That was me, and I, I just was wanting, um, the district maybe to kind of give us an overview, I, I see it's a small number of teachers, but again, going back many, many years in the grading policy, and I can't remember the gentleman who came and spent quite some time, um, with the district, and he raised the notion of the, the zero, and I don't know, are we, you know, have we abandoned that, was the option that some are doing it, and then kind of what the purpose of this is.
It is Doug Reeves, um, Dr. Rogers, and he is with another cohort, so there have been cohorts of secondary schools that have hired Mr. Reeves, but we are embarking on that district-wide, where everybody, we, as you know, we are looking at changing the grading policy, and so he continues to work with cohorts of schools, so this is just another cohort that he's working with.
So he still is involved in the work, and so.
We brought him back because he was not as involved last year.
Okay, right.
Some of his contracts did not go through, so I'm bringing him back again this year.
And so is the effort of the district to just, after we get the input, to evaluate, does this zero work, um, to keep doing this to our students? And, and, and hopefully, when you all come back and present to us, because everyone needs to understand how that affects a student, especially a high-performing student that is used to trying to, you know, raise the bar, and then that zero is just something you just can't get past. And so that goes hand in hand with the parent and Aries, and we even need to revisit that conversation, but I want to hear, you know, where we are, because I remember when, I mean, I wasn't even on the board then, and, and I know at that time, some just felt, yeah, we should use it, but we also, Doug Reeves did a wonderful job explaining why it's detrimental, so.
That's correct, and we are moving forward with him this coming year.
Okay.
There was a pause on it last year, but we are going to continue.
And I'm glad that you're moving forward with it, uh, because I think we're both on it, um, the, so for people to understand, uh, you know, there's a ten percent gap, you know, when you get fifty-nine percent, sixty-nine percent, or so forth, in between A, B, and C, um, grades, but then within the F, it goes fifty-nine all the way down to zero, and that's a huge gap for students to catch up with, and when they get zero, um, that impacts their grades, and many of them never come out of it, so then, as much as they try to bring it up, so, uh, I, I do want to go back and revisit that, I'm glad the district is moving in that direction, thank you.
Moved. Oh, Ms. Sivas, sorry about that.
Okay, um, so, so I don't know as much about this, um, um, contractor, this person, but I would definitely like to learn more, so I don't know if, um, maybe we can have some sort of presentation, or maybe some information sent my way, um, just so that I can catch myself up, uh, because, um, I definitely see, uh, the points that are being, being brought up, and I, I can't say I disagree.
And Dr. Flores?
Dr. Dottie Rogers, what do you recommend, and Ms. Medina?
Well, when, when we, when I was a parent, we recommended to get rid of it, and that was like eight years ago when he was, you know, here working with us, so. I ask about it occasionally, because I want to know, is it, does it still exist, so it sounds like we're working our way through it, and I don't know how we get to, can we get to a point to make a decision on it, because it is impactful to students. They cannot recover. And if there's something different on that, I want to hear it, but I went to many, many presentations with him, and he was not in support of the zero, and many were not, but, you know.
Oh, could I ask, uh, Ms. Applegate, um, Suda is under you, so, and I see that she requested it. Can you tell us anything more about it?
We had embarked on a partnership with Mr. Reeves, and it's exactly what Dr. Rogers is saying, it's a different, um, mindset on grading, there's a different rating scale for grading, that work was suspended this year. I'm bringing it back for the new year, because I believe it's very valuable, and I think it will help our teachers to have a different mindset on grading, so I'm revisiting that and bringing it back to the district.
Could we, could we, um, sorry, am I next?
He's not looking. Yeah, we need to do it.
It's about.
We need to do it.
Would, would it be, um, appropriate if maybe we can get some consensus on maybe bringing that to the subcommittee, um, policy? Subcommittee policy?
I, I agree, I, I concur with doing it, um, and so we can get, and I want to say, we want input, that's why we're saying that with the sub, subcommittee, but I think it's on the back burner too long, and here we are, three years later.
I think you're right, Dr. Rogers, I would like to move forward, because it has been paused, it was good work. Um, I think we need to change the mindset of grading policies in general, and it would go hand in hand with the changes that we want to make to the grading policies, especially now more than ever, though we have the learning loss, and there have been so many other circumstances with our students' learning.
So could we get consensus to bring that to the subcommittee?
Next question, this is eleven point five three? Right? So this guy's come on, what?
So, so, I don't think we can bring it back to the committee, because it's an item for us to vote on, uh, so, um.
No, 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 not that, the, the policy itself, the grading policy.
Oh, the policy, oh, the policy, oh, yeah, well, that, I agree with that, yeah.
I, I would suggest that.
But I, I think we need to stay on point here, point of order, that we need to stay on the discussion of the consent item, um, agenda item, vote on that.
I got mixed up, I got mixed up.
Well, they, he has grading practices in here, so I was wondering, is he impeding on what we had in place? Are we implementing this full, this is only three hundred and fifty teachers, so that's really why I was concerned. Three hundred and fifty teachers, so is that the last cohort, is it the sixth cohort, so it's, I think we have to.
And this is for that, this is, are we sure, this is for the item of grading?
This is another cohort that would be moving forward with.
This is another cohort?
Yeah, but, and, and just so I'm clear, Dr. Rogers, you're, you're saying that, uh, this person was teaching something contrary to what?
No, 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 he's in support of the, the zero problem that we have in the grading practice.
Why are we going to approve it then?
My question, the reason, the reason why I, this was my opportunity, when I saw grading practices, to say, it's only three hundred and fifty teachers. I ventured to say, when, how long this has been, when are we going to embed this into our grading practices? So we don't have to keep getting this court, this, this is bigger than just a few people at a time.
Yeah, so you want to bring it back, but I want to just, for this item, we can, we can, I want to move to approve, right? So you want to bring it back, but I want to just, for this item, we can, I want to move to approve, right? Alright, move to approve.
I did have a comment on here. We're looking at 11.53, right, and it says 49,000, but yet, it's 34,170 on the contract? I see two different numbers. Am I, why is it?
49.
Oh, okay, you know what? Mine wasn't on the same slide of 11.53. Okay, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any more discussion? No, let's vote.
So, wait, yes, I do.
Okay.
When would it be an appropriate time, then, to bring, to ask the question of consensus, to bring that policy to the subcommittee policy, if it's not now?
I don't know, but I guess, I'm hearing two different things. I mean, the policy committee, you're talking about some policy, but if you're hearing, if you want direction from the board, or I'm hearing, I know...
This is, this is, our policy hasn't changed.
Right, that's my point, but staff has heard you, and what you're saying, is you think other people need the same training.
Well, Myra is asking, she's asking a different que, in reference to...
I think we can ask for consensus to bring it to the policy subcommittee, and I think the, just to clarify, I support, I'm in favor of this, because it's the last cohort, because that, he's teaching them how we're supposed to change the mindset for the policy, grading policy, so.
That's exactly correct, Dr. Flores. Before we bring a policy change on grading, which is so personal for our educators, they really put their heart and soul in grading, we want them to be a part of the decision. So Doug Reeves comes to train them, to help change the mindset, to show them a different grading scale and why that's appropriate, especially for the needs that we have now. We want them to be part of the decision-making before we just change policy, so we want them to be on board. But we can certainly bring the policy as we rewrite it to the policy committee.
And I would, I would just add, if the board would like to take action on this item, and then to Ms. Sabios's question, perhaps during review of board requests, you can make the request to get consensus.
That'd be a good place for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To get consensus.
It was hard to understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. So perhaps under the review of board requests, item 12.1, you can make that request to get consensus.
Alrighty, I think we've had a very good discussion, and it's been moved and properly second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Mr. Tillman, I don't have your vote.
Alright, motion carries. I believe we have 11.60 now, which is renewal agreement with Dennis, Wolliver, Kelly, Attorneys at Law, for an amount of $250,000, Human Resources.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Discussion.
Call for the vote.
This was the one that was polled, correct?
Right.
Okay. No discussion? Alright.
I guess I have a question. Who was it polled by?
Did you have a question about it?
No, I just want to vote on it. I think it's too much money.
So, let me, is this, is this a up to as well, or is this just a full payout?
Not to exceed. It's up to.
I just want to call a vote.
Oh, it's here.
Alright, so there's no more further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Sorry, I did, Mr. Tillman, I want the wrong page. Alright, we have three yays, three nays, it looks like, so no action on that, correct? Alright, we are done with consent items. Let's go ahead and get to 12.1, which is review of board requests, and Ms. Sabios, this will be that time that you are looking for consensus.
So, yeah, if I can get consensus for, to bring that item to the subcommittee.
Stated a little bit more so I can understand it, yeah.
Can I get more consensus to bring the grading policy to the subcommittee?
What we can do, yes, I think what, I do follow with what Ms. Applegate was mentioning, because when we brought this forward, it was such an issue, and there, I mean, it's such an issue, you know, teachers have their ways of grading, and some are, don't want to change it, and so that's why I think this educational piece came into play, because although it makes perfect sense to change it, there was just, we had to start working with the mindset of why it's so important to change it. We could probably have that discussion of what that would look like, and moving that forward, once we're ready to, we kind of, like, we could prepare and then get guidance from Ms. Applegate, and through their recommendations, and then kind of move forward from there, but definitely, we can have a conversation with the policy committee.
And I understand, and I hear what you're saying. I guess just to kind of be proactive, and just at least get started on the work.
Tillman?
I really think that we make a mistake when we take issues to the, especially issues that could be controversial, to the policy committee, before we agendize it to, for the entire board to give direction of where we're going. Because the problem with the policy committee, you don't have a majority of the board there. So you really could take the risk of having a minority of the board give direction that the majority doesn't agree with.
I, I amend your request.
And I've seen it happen, and I really think, most recently, it's been used as a tool to try to force the board, the majority of the board's hand, and I think it's a bad thing. I think what you really want is, is to have the discussion from the board to give direction. Now, the, once the board to give direction, to me, it's up to that committee to hash out the details and then bring it back to the board. But it doesn't start from the committee up to the board. The board's supposed to say, for example, in this one, you would agendize it. We get a presentation from the different perspectives on what we think should be changed. The board would have a form of consensus of direction we want to go, and then give direction to create that policy, and then that's when the policy committee would present the policy, then bring it back to the board.
Dr. Dottie Rogers had a comment as well.
So I will say this, the simple version of that is if it comes to us and we don't agree, just like we just didn't agree, it is what it is, Mr. Tillman, right? Because that's, that's what you usually say, we bring everything to a vote. Now, I also will say this, that it was brought up, I think we should rotate on the, and I haven't said, I've been meaning to say this, but I think we should rotate on the policy committee, just in general, generally speaking, because it will give different perspectives of it. You're still giving your input, but at the end of the day, you still got to come back to the board. So, and then, and then lastly, I think that we were trying to lewd, and I don't want to confuse the public after they look, that we were trying to come in and say, teachers, you need to do X, Y, and Z. This is a major problem that has been, and Ms. Applegate is shaking her head in agreement. I am not, or we did not bring this up, we had, we did sit on this committee. As a parent, if I think back to my parental days when my kids were little, I saw what it did, and they couldn't recover. The great, because you had a zero, as opposed to the one that was sitting in the class that, okay, you had the D, you made it up, and you got your points back. So I want to hear the discussion from everyone. It was an old discussion that I heard. I'd like to hear what they're saying now, because we are in a different grading, everything. This is post-COVID, and anything that we can do so that we can support our students, and not enable them to just continue to, you know, be here, but we don't want to put something in front of them that makes a greater challenge, especially under these circumstances. So I'm in agreement, if it's a presentation, but we got to get the ball rolling again, so that we can get presentations, and then that, that gives us that input that we need to do. So personally, whichever way we go, but again, I agree with you. I say policy committee, because that is what has been in place when I got here, but the same people keep serving on the policy committee. So we keep getting the same thing, and then the policy committee also blocks, because three people got to agree to meet, you know, and that is difficult. So however we can get it and move it along is great. I'm not looking to have three people go to decide for what my role is here. So that's, that's my point. We just, we need to talk about it, and this is just simply getting us back to KPIs again. If we saw, when we see that in motion again, it's going to answer a lot of our questions, but it's also going to call for accountability. Bring it to us and get it done.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers. Dr. Flores?
I agree with you, Dr. Rogers. I think, and also with you, Mr. Tillman, I think we need to discuss it, agendize it, and I agree with you too, Ms. Sabios, that we take it to policy, but I also think we need to look at the ed code. What does ed code say regarding grading? We have to follow that, and maybe do some research, do some research, and investigate, and direct, you know, Mrs. Applegate to do the research determining, I don't know if this falls under your, does it fall under you, the grading? Yeah. So, I mean, I need to know, I would like us to know what ed code says, because we do have to abide by ed code, and what's the parameters. We have to ask our teachers' union to have input as well. We need to ask teachers, right? And, but I do agree, we need something systematic that is fair and equitable for our kids. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Sabios?
You, and the only reason why I'm, you know, asking for it is because I've heard that it's been something like eight years, right, and it hasn't happened. So again, I want to make sure that it doesn't, another eight years don't go by, and we don't actually sit down and take a look at it. I hear, though, Mr. Tillman, and I appreciate you kind of, you know, providing some clarity, at least for me, on, you know, kind of like what you're talking about in terms of like the process, because I understand what you're saying. The only concern that I have, though, is with items to be agendized, I don't know when that will happen, right? It can, it's not going to be next board meeting, it may not be the board meeting after that. So not knowing when it's actually going to get before us is essentially delaying it, in my opinion, when we could have at least gotten some, you know, start on it through the subcommittee to do some of what Dr. Flores is saying, research it, because when Ms. Applegate brings it, brings it to the subcommittee, usually they've done that back work. You know, they've, they've looked at ed code, they've looked at the current policy and, you know, made some suggestions, things like, and then we have that dialogue there. So I just want to make sure that we, we say no to the subcommittee, and then, and then we don't know when it's coming back.
So I'm going to help you out with this. Number one, the district is huge, so it's like a huge ship that turns slowly. So you're right, a lot of things don't get agendized, but Ms. Cunningham, we used to have a list of upcoming agenda items, and we used to prioritize that list, and I would suggest that we get that list back, and just like we, just like we prioritize the list tonight, we can prioritize the list of items that are going to be agendized.
And just for my sake, I guess, what is the difference between the top 10 priority and the future agenda items, like?
Because your top 10 priority is giving direction to staff of what our priorities are, and they'll start working on those immediately, whether we have it agendized or not. And they know where our resources are, and they report back to us saying, you guys, this is your top 10 list, this was your number one, we started work on it, and here's the progress that we're making. Some of those things don't have to be agendized to start to work. The top 10 agendized item are items like this, that we plan on agendizing that are an emergency. For instance, the one we did tonight, where we said, hey, bring it back right away about Mr. Funches making people work 200 hours a week for free. We want to talk about that right away, so that's an emergency item. So we know we're going to agendize that at the next meeting. But there are a list of items just like this that we need to prioritize, like the one you're talking about, and we need to see it. And you, right, Ms. Cunningham, we do have that list, right?
Yeah, can I clarify just a bit on that? The KP, I mean, the future agenda items, that was always done by cabinet, like in June, they would bring it to the board for approval. They, they would go through and list.
Exactly.
What board meetings they wanted to have the KPIs, or certain presentations, you guys would approve it.
Yes.
Throughout the year.
Yes.
You guys would add things if something came up, and we would adjust.
Exactly, yes.
And I do have the last list.
Right, and then you would see on the calendar, Ms. Sabios, that this would be agendized for the November meeting, or the October meeting, which you would know for sure.
So can, so going back to the original request, can we bring it up to the subcommittee so that we can start looking at it? And can Ms. Cunningham bring that future agenda item list? Can we do both?
I think there was a consensus, well, it looked like there was a consensus, maybe I got it wrong, one, two, three. So to at least have that conversation in subcommittee doesn't mean that we're going to create it, but...
Yeah, and I think that was Ms. Sabios's request, so I want to honor her request. First, you know, I know we got some opinion and difference of opinions, which is fine too, but let's make sure we honor your request for consensus or not, in regards to bringing it to board policy subcommittee, that's what you requested, right?
Now, I just don't want to frustrate Ms. Sabios, because if you go to the committee, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to ever present it to the entire board, where you're going to get action on it. So at some point, it's going to be agendized anyway.
And I do want to clarify that Dr. Funches did not push to have employees, just in case people actually believe it.
That's a joke, I was just playing.
I mean, you're describing my work week, Mr. Tillman.
For the record, I was just playing, Mr. Funches did not ask you for the work 200 hours a week for free.
No, he did not.
Ms. Sabios?
Sorry, on this same roll of asking for consensus, I know that we did meet with Dr. Rodriguez for potentially creating some type of board policy for IEPs to be scheduled, or I'm sorry, to be translated in a timely manner. So we kind of got together and talked about it a little bit, but we didn't do anything necessarily, because we didn't have board consensus. So at this point, I would like to ask for board consensus to come back to the subcommittee and work through that.
Okay, but I want to make sure that we approve consensus on what item before we discuss the second item, which I believe we have. If there is any opposition to that, please say so now, or if you ever hold your piece. Alright, and then the second piece now, you want to ask for consensus on?
On bringing the, bringing a potential board policy to the subcommittee, so that we can then bring it to the board on translating IEPs in a timely manner, an assessment report.
I would agree to that. I'll look at my colleagues. Alright, looks like I have a majority consensus. Thank you, Ms. Sabios, and very good job on getting that down. So we'll move on now, 12.1, staff, please review the items and updates requested. So I could go celebrate my son's birthday before it's midnight.
Okay, let's see. Can you hear me? Sorry, my voice. Okay, item number one, Dr. Flores and Dr. Wyatt asked Mr. Solins to follow up with the parents of our student Elijah Valdez regarding the bullying concern at North Park Elementary. Second, Mr. Tillman asked for and received consensus to agendize the discussion regarding mandatory overtime for CSCA unit members, and Dr. Funches did say he would reach out to CSCA regarding that. Dr. Flores recommended adding Juneteenth to the calendar, and Dr. Funches indicated that this was a negotiable item and a topic of discussion at the board's direction. He will bring that back to closed session. Ms. Sabios, with regard to item 7.3, the California School Dashboard Local Indicators Report, Ms. Sabios asked for information about how the surveys were distributed, such as the frequency of their deployment, and used to collect the... such as the frequency of their deployment and used to collect the data priority, data for priority number three, the parental involvement and family engagement. And Ms. Applegate responded that this is under Dr. Sandra Rodriguez's purview and will come back with that info. Dr. Flores asked that the expanded learning opportunities will include extended opportunities for fun and play. Sorry, bear with me.
Is that it?
Sorry. It's not scrolling fast enough here. Okay, Ms. Abigail Ramirez, because of the, the news of the expanded learning opportunities to expand our recruiting efforts. And Dr. Dottie Rogers, with regard to the transitional kindergarten work groups and specifically work group B for the community engagement and partnerships, specifically what methods of outreach are being used to reach families that are historically underrepresented. And Mr. Tillman asked for a presentation and a message before the start of the new school year to give to parents, to give them a realistic picture of what transitional kindergarten spaces we can offer and at which sites. Also, he asked about transportation for TK to ensure that TK students be provided transportation services if they have siblings and if there is space on the bus. Ms. Sabios clarified that the transitional kindergarten, the plan, it was a three-year plan, and asked if the plan for the district was to provide a TK program at every school site. She wants to make sure that the goal is to provide TK at every site. Mr. Tillman. Mr. Tillman requested that we are doing everything possible to utilize existing space regarding TK before resorting to a centralized Cardinal City. Oh, sorry, sorry. Reordering the Cardinal City location, sorry. Dr. Dottie Rogers asked for a communication piece regarding the schedule and regarding the acting administrator in charge for the superintendent. Dr. Wyatt asked for and obtained consensus to approve the administrator in charge slash superintendent rotation. Ms. Sabios expressed concern about the administrator in charge and encouraged the board to hire an interim superintendent. Dr. Wyatt asked for consensus on the top 10 list. Ms. Sabios, regarding item 11.33, requested an update and a presentation for accountability purposes. And Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that the district possibly consider options to hire from within. Ms. Sabios asked for and received consensus to bring the grading policy to the subcommittee. Mr. Tillman requested that the future agenda items list be brought back and requested for, I'm sorry, and Ms. Sabios requested for consensus to bring back the potential board policy regarding translating IEPs in a timely manner. And I think that's everything.
Alrighty, and thank you for the.
All moved.
Very short list, and it's been moved and for adjourning? 13.1? All right, thank you, board. I'm sure we're in majority consensus on that. Very good. And staff, thank you. And I would say normally to our guests, thank you for staying with us here in person, but thank you for staying with us virtually, if you're still out there. Have a great evening and I need to get the heck out of here. Go celebrate a birthday.
Let's go home.